Are you all settled there, Michelle? Okay. Great. I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next regular Board of Education meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 22 at 7:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room. Thank you, everyone. Welcome, everybody. And we are very excited to say that the schools have opened. Children were welcomed back last week for shortened orientation days. We had our hybrid model start today, remote and at home. I know there are a lot of questions and issues, many of which I'm sure we will hear about during public comments tonight. And Board members also may have questions or comments during the reopening of schools. I think that is understandable. And certainly, I think that there are some real issues that we want to be able to talk through and understand. What I would ask is that everyone, their general demeanor, remain respectful during this. I would say 90% of emails we have received have done just that. They have been the very best of Darien, questions, different thoughts. There are some times where I think we just need to remember how hard everyone on this side of the table is working. On the side of the table, including Dennis and Duke in that, so I'll go all the way around. And so I just ask that we all continue to adapt to this strange new situation we're in. And the idea that schools have refashioned themselves within four months. That is not without discussion and debate and maybe some changes, looking at what works and what doesn't work. But certainly know that everyone is working on behalf of children. And there is lots of room for opinions within that role. With that, I will say thank you, the administration, for getting schools open. I think that from the reports I heard back, teachers were happy to see the faces smiling children. And children were happy to see the smiling faces of their teachers. So I know we, I have heard we have a lot of public comments tonight, so I will reserve any more time to allow for as much public comment as possible. Please do remember with public comment, you are limited by policy to three minutes of conversation. And we will give you a warning and ask you to wrap up if we see you approaching time. And please just, and please remember, say your name and your address for the record. We do need to record that. Mrs. Ritchie and I do our best to get it right, but your name, your address, and a three-minute line. Thank you, everyone. With that, we will go to public comment. Do we have Dr. McGeadigan running that class again tonight? Michelle? So, Michelle, we are ready when you are.
Good. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, good evening. Public comment. We're going to open up for public comment. In order to make public comments, you have to click the participants icon on the bottom of your Zoom screen. You're going to click the raise hand option. You're going to notice a blue hand icon appear in the upper corner of your screen. It's going to show your face, name, and phone number. When it's your turn to speak, I will identify you, announce you by your name, and I will announce you as unmuted and ready for public comments. Once you are recognized and unmuted, please state your name and address, and you will have up to three minutes to comment. Is our first speaker ready? I need the laptop. This one is my phone. Lori Olson, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, Lori Olson, co-chair of CDSP, 16 Littlebrook Road North. Dr. Adley, members of the administration and members of the Board of Education. First, we want to say thank you to all of you. We have some idea of the tremendous amount of work that has been done to get our kids back to school. Frankly, it is a Herculean task, and we are incredibly appreciative to all of you for your roles in tackling it. We want to talk about communication tonight. We want to reiterate the importance of regular detailed communication between the district and parents and guardians as we navigate this year. We appreciate the efforts you have been making to communicate regularly and to let parents know when to expect communications over the last several months. However, we are still hearing a desire for more frequent and more detailed information. Things are moving quickly and changing rapidly, and people want to understand what is happening and why. On the subject of responsiveness, we've been hearing too many complaints over the last few months that calls and emails are going unanswered. We cannot begin to imagine what your inboxes look like, but it is critical that people get a response in a timely manner. Even if it is just to say, we received this and we'll get back to you. If the term "timely manner" needs to be redefined, please have that discussion and share the information with the community. People need to know that their concerns are being heard. Regarding the reopening, we have heard from many parents who did not understand why the decision was made to reopen with a three-week hybrid plan. Many point to the case data in the state and the county, which remain low enough to support a full in-person reopening. We understand that there were many other factors beyond case data that went into this decision. However, it seems that these factors have not been communicated clearly enough to the community, and there are still a lot of questions. People have very different viewpoints on the current situation and how to handle it. Further, explaining the district's decision-making process may not change their viewpoints, but it may help them better understand yours. As of September 29, we expect that our students will be in school, in person, full-time. Please lay out for us how the decision will be made to go forward with that plan so that there will be, there will not be any confusion or surprises. People need to feel that they know how the decisions are being made and that they have a reasonable understanding of what they can expect moving forward. Specifically, parents need the answers to these questions. Will you consider case data only? Will you assess how student, faculty, staff are adjusting to new protocols and restrictions? If so, how will that be assessed? Are there additional materials or building accommodations that must be in place in order to make the shift? Will the Derg A districts collaborate on a decision? Is this an administrative decision, or will the Board of Education have a role? Can we expect weekly updates on how things are proceeding? Will each school communicate to families, or will there be a coordinated communication from the district? And finally, will the district have a COVID-19 dashboard so families can quickly access updated information? Thank you for your time and your attention to these matters. And thank you again for your tireless efforts on behalf of our students, faculty, and staff.
Thank you, Mrs. Olson. Our next speaker.
Jocelyn Delancey, you are unmuted and recognized.
Thank you. And Jocelyn Delancey, 110 Commons Park North, Stanford, Connecticut. I am speaking on behalf of the Darien Education Association. First and foremost, I just want to say that it was absolutely wonderful to see your children in the schools as we started last week. Your kids are why we're here. Teaching is what we love to do, and it was very, very wonderful to see the students. Again, we also want to thank our PTOs for all of the welcoming gifts that we received, whether it be luncheons or masks. We were celebrated, and that felt really great, and so we want to share our appreciation. Something else we would like to ask of the community is just to remember that we are working hard and diligently, and we are committed to helping your children. And we just hope that as we navigate this new way, that you are patient with us, that you understand that sometimes juggling our communication is not always easy when we are working with the students that we're working with throughout the day. And so as we have an internet loss, or we have a program that isn't connecting, we're here for you. We're going to work through it, and we're here for your children. And so we just want to make sure that you know that we are here for you, wanting to do the best. We also want to make sure we maintain safety, and that we are going to work with the Board and the superintendent to ensure that if there are certain teaching things that are going on, that we are wanting to work with and reflect upon, that they'll work with us. And we hope that that continued collaboration will continue as we go through this hybrid and navigate that field. And as we go forward with whatever model, the science, the data, and our circumstances let us face. So we want to thank the parents and the community for your support. Thank the kids for coming in excited and ready to learn, and we look forward to working with you through this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Delancey. Our next speaker, please.
Taylor Carter, you are unmuted and recognized.
Thank you. I'm Taylor Carter, and I live at 385 Middlesex Road. I'm speaking tonight as a parent of four young Darien students, rather than as a member of the Board of Finance. On Friday night, I received an email announcing that my kindergartner and second grader will not be streaming into the classroom this week, as planned, because they are allegedly not fully prepared. My second grader has received nothing more than a slide deck for her education since early March. That is to say, zero live instruction, zero teaching in six months. That is an absolute failure of the Darien Public Schools. Now she will receive only two-fifths of this week's instruction from a teacher. And today I read that all new learning will happen only on in-person days. That means 40% of the curriculum will be delivered as long as this persists. This arrangement cannot stretch beyond one week. Given the ages of these students, I would argue it's the parents, not the kids, who need to familiarize themselves with the new technologies used for live-stream delivery. So who wasn't prepared for this?
Mrs. Carter, you are muted. You are unmuted now.
What was the last thing I said?
Who was not prepared?
Thank you. I'm frustrated to hear the administration pointing at the kids, and I know it isn't the parents. No one has even mentioned to us yet how we will access the streaming service. I would like a much clearer explanation for the delay. And further and more importantly, I'm shocked to see that major educational decisions like this continue to be made without any input from the Board of Education. I have heard from several of you that it's because you've been told you have no authority over operations. Is that true? Are decisions of this magnitude, like whether or not to provide my child with her free appropriate education, really considered operational? And ones you feel permitted to delegate? As a parent, I depend on the Board of Education and the Council of Darien School Parents to advocate for and defend my children's education. You have failed me. Instead of setting policy and educational expectations, you have blindly supported the administration and washed your hands of any responsibility. How were no parents included on the reopening committee? How was the decision to reopen and?
You are muted again, Mrs.
Agreed upon when no parents and no data supported it. How were Fridays decided? How were Fridays decided to be half-days without any demand that those hours of instruction be replaced? How can my seven-year-old be allowed to go for six straight months and now possibly longer with no live teaching at all? You have abdicated your responsibility. You must reclaim it. Inaction is unacceptable. Our kids need a voice at the table. You say schools exist for children. Please recommit today to making their education your top priority or step down.
Thank you, Mrs. Carter. Our next speaker, please.
Edward Waschaka, you are unmuted and recognized.
Ed Waschaka, 7 Lee Warden Lane. I want to thank everybody for getting the kids back into school. I appreciate that. My wife appreciates it. I wanted to just briefly address fall sports, which may be not as important for folks as getting the kids back in school. I'm one of the parents in town that's been working with coaches, athletic directors, and other parents across the state to try and have a fall football season. There were a bunch of kids that were up in Hartford over the weekend, and some that are going back tomorrow. I think it's great that the kids are fighting for something that is really important to them. One of the things that we would like to ensure is that the administration is supporting this effort. I think the Department of Public Health and CAC have made a big mess of fall sports in general, but we are where we are. I think the data supports our being able to play football. And as long as the data and the metrics continue to trend in the right direction, we should try and let these kids have a season. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waschaka. Our next speaker.
Greg Gramlin, you are unmuted and recognized.
Thank you, everyone, for taking the time and your efforts. On behalf of the roughly 850 parents in our community who signed the reopening petition that we created three weeks ago, I would like to reiterate the concerns expressed by Taylor Carter a few minutes ago. It's September 8, and our younger elementary school students are back to where they were in March for three out of five days a week, with literally no guidance from the administration or actual teaching occurring. The e-learning exercises given to my first-grade son today included counting to 20, moving some pictures around on a screen, and having his picture taken. He finished everything in less than 20 minutes. This is totally unacceptable. It's not just our family. Here's a direct quote from a text message my wife received today. "Is it too late to sign that petition? I'm about to throw my kid's Chromebooks in the trash." Has anyone sitting in the room, either from the Board of Ed or administration, actually participated in e-learning? In particular, with a five-to-10-year-old child? On the Board of Ed's website, the first item under "Role and Responsibility" reads as follows. Develop, implement, and monitor this district's policies. These policies serve as the roadmap for the school district, giving direction to the administration and staff, and becoming the foundation for accountability. Based upon the feedback I've received directly from Chairperson Ockman, other members of the Board of Ed, and through my FOIA request, no formal approval or vote was completed regarding the reopening plan or recent changes to that plan. This represents a total lack of oversight or accountability for the administration, as in spite of numerous other clearly less important operating decisions approved or voted on in the past by the Board of Ed. If the Board of Ed members, who've been duly elected by our town, are unwilling to act and follow through on the very role they've laid out for themselves, what is the purpose of the Board of Ed? 84% of the parents of Darien communicated support for a five-day-a-week-in-person return to school per the actual parent survey results received through my FOIA request. You may note that this figure is different than what our superintendent communicated at the meeting two weeks ago, which were incorrect. Whether this survey was intended to be utilized to determine parent preferences or school capacity, did our administration even bother to look at the results or take them into account when making the reopening plan? With every communication, less transparency is provided, which ultimately undermines the administration's assurances to us that we will move to a five-day-per-week in-person schedule on September 29, irrespective of what happens the next two weeks. Is the Board of Ed planning to hold the administration accountable to implement its stated plan? If not, is Darien going to be providing educational vouchers?
Mr. Gramlin, if you could wrap up, you have about 10 seconds left.
Yep.
Mr. Gramlin, you are muted. You are unmuted again.
The parent organizations in town have been nonexistent on these critical decisions over the past month. So I'm glad to see the CDSP finally speaking up and laying it out for the Board of Ed and administration. The points, the parent's voice must be heard.
Thank you. Mr. Gramlin, can you please state your address for the record?
It's 11 Blueberry Lane.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Riley Mack, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, this is Donna Mack. My son Riley is a student at Darien High School. And I'm here today because I'm looking for some help. Riley is a student that is in a very small minority group at Darien High School. He is African-American. He has learning differences, and he's relatively new to town. Any of these three, these three things would be very difficult for any student to become part of the community at Darien High School. When I met for his very first PPT meeting at Darien, I expressed how worried I was about Riley being able to be part of this community. And luckily, Riley has been able to be part of the community because of football. Football has given him a brotherhood. It has helped him access things that his learning disability would otherwise be difficult. And it has given him a purpose. It has given him a place in our town. Riley's father lives in California, and so his football coaches and seeing them have become important role models for him. For Riley, football is not just a game. It's part of his lifeline. He did everything that I asked of him, that the town asked of him, with wearing his mask, with social distancing. Literally, he stayed in the house for months. And so for him to all of a sudden have football taken from him has been very difficult. In Riley's life, he's encountered many times things that are not fair. He has many difficulties in his life, and I've had to say to him, life's not fair. But I think that this is one thing that can be fair, that we can fix it as a group, that we need to look at, like, all the other sports that are playing, the metrics that say that we can play the sports. But we need the Board of Education and our town to help support us. And so I'm here today to say that I think we can safely play football, and I'm asking for your support with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mack, could you give your address for the record, please?
Yes, 21 Heather Lane.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
User N86243, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hi. My name is Donna Sheehan, and I reside at 41 Narodin Avenue. I'll just say to Donna, we love Riley. So I agree that Riley is one of the many people on the football team that has gotten a lot out of the sport itself and the commodity. I'm a mother of a senior on the football team. I would like to thank the district for your time and also the monumental effort by the district to reopen DHS. I'm here today to ask the Darien Board of Education to support your parents, your students, and your community, and join us in challenging the recent decision by CAC to cancel the football season. I'm respectfully asking for the parents, for your support, for the right to try, the right to trust Coach Porche and his staff, our players, and our parents. The right to try, like our neighboring states, New York and New Jersey. The right for our players to not lose recruiting opportunities that will surely go to players in New York and New Jersey that had the privilege to play. I'm asking that you trust the coaches, the parents, and the players are all responsible people. If there's a spike in COVID, we will respectfully end the season. I'm also asking you to consider the mental health of our younger generation. While the world is rightfully looking out for the elderly, I'm here to say that we need people to also be mindful of the mental health of the teenage generation. I lost my father in July as an indirect consequence of COVID, so I didn't utter those words lightly. On September 3, Governor Whitmer of Michigan issued an executive order to reinstate all sports. In her words, "We are ready to again provide those experiences to students and communities that have hoped for return to normalcy." Given the challenges of online education in many school districts across the state, providing sports in a daily routine may be more important than ever in motivating students and providing a safe outlet for physical activity, competition, and socialization. I believe United Front from the school district, the players, the parents, and the coaches will help Governor Lamont to come to the same conclusion. And while I understand that many of the parents have more issues that seem more important, and I really respect that, I really respectfully hope that the district also considers what football means to the high schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Sheehan. Our next speaker, please.
Fiona, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, thank you. This is actually Nova Hall, and my address is 44 Schofield Farms. I am a fifth-grade teacher in Norwalk, and for us, we are in school every single day with the kids. I also have a son who plays football at Darien High. I guess as parents and educators, we always want to do what's right by our children, even when doing that difficult, when that, doing that thing is difficult for us. Football, for some young men, is what keeps them going to school. They know that if they don't show up, they can't go to practice. And if they don't go to practice, they let the team down. For my son, it also means motivation to get better grades. I'm sure, like a lot of his teammates, so that they have a chance of playing football at a good university. He also is one of those optimistic kids who hopes to go pro one day. Well, we'll see about that. But with a degree from a good school, he would also have a solid Plan B. However, if we take football away this fall, our senior boys will be greatly disadvantaged in recruiting. These boys have worked harder for this sport, for the high school, and for our town than most of us will ever work in our lives. Some of these boys started playing football, organized football, from the age of seven or eight years old. Almost 10 years later, they've dedicated a decade of their very young lives to this game. And I think that we, as adults, should honor that, not discount it. We have been playing this sport successfully, following every new rule that the CAC has handed down. We haven't had any problems. And we, as parents, are open to finding solutions to do the hard thing, but the right thing, to give our boys that well-earned opportunity that most of the country is allowing their players. So I'm asking for your help. I'm respectfully calling on the Board and the DHS administration to help the boys, the families, and our community bring back 11-on-11 football this fall. We are a problem-solving community, and this is a problem worth solving. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hall. Our next speaker.
Beth Morgan, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, my name's Beth Morgan, and I live at 35 Hamilton Lane. I am PTO co-chair at Ox Ridge, where my twins are in fourth grade. I am asking the Board of Ed to please listen to the parents of fourth graders at Ox Ridge, who are fearful that their children's education will suffer yet another year due to the loss of one section. Our children's grade has consistently had four sections from kindergarten through third grade. Last year in third grade, my twins had 19 to 20 students in each of their classes. The other two classes were of similar size. This year, we have 74 fourth graders at Ox Ridge, so an average of 18 and 1/2 students per class over four sections. However, last week, we discovered our four sections were reduced to three, with the distribution of students being 25, 25, and 24, putting two classes over the district's own cap of 24. And these numbers, which are already over cap, will likely rise, as there are currently 33 homes up for sale or rent in the Ox Ridge District. The fact that Ox Ridge has the space to accommodate these large classes doesn't address our concerns about the impact on our children's learning. We are emerging from a dismal spring where students struggled through e-learning and had minimal face time with their teacher. So it is more critical than ever that they return to school in an environment that is the most conducive to learning and affords them a real connection with their teacher. Having 25 or more kids in a class stretches the limits of the teacher to adequately control the class and teach to each student, even in a non-COVID world, and also places undue hardship on the students to focus and compete for one-on-one instruction. Now add the unprecedented challenges of remote learning and social distancing, and it is a recipe for disaster. The district has caps for a reason, and those reasons don't even take into consideration COVID. So why is it deemed acceptable to ignore these caps, particularly now? Further, while Ox Ridge lost a section, it is highly inequitable that other schools gained a fourth-grade section, putting classes at both Holmes and Royal. putting classes at both Holmes and Royal at 14 students each, four to five students less than what we would have averaged had we kept our fourth section, and 11 students less than what we now have with three. I understand that there will be paraeducators on hand to assist with these larger classes. However, paras are not teachers. Plus, paras add more bodies in the classroom and the addition of bodies causes more spacing concerns and even more distraction in the classroom. One final point, I briefly spoke with Dr. Adley about this issue and he said that statistically adding one more student to a class does not create a significant difference. He was talking about the classes going from 24 to 25. Putting aside the fact that going from 24 to 25 puts the classes over the district's own cap, the issue isn't adding one student. The issue is adding six to seven students because had we maintained our four sections, there would be 18 to 19 kids in each section. Instead, we have 25 and this is a time when classes should be shrinking, not expanding.
This is when you are approaching time. If you could wrap up, please?
Sure. We kindly ask that you acknowledge the unfair stress this puts on our children and teachers and add a teacher to the fourth grade at Ox Ridge, so our original four sections are restored. Thank you so much for your tireless work on behalf of Darien Schools.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Jonathan Dunn, you are unmuted and recognized.
Mr. Dunn, can you hear us? When do we move on and we'll come back to you, Mr. Dunn, if you're having technical issues?
Jennifer W. Sherman, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hello?
Is that Sherman?
This is Jennifer Sherman. I think somebody else was trying to speak. Was somebody else trying to speak?
Nope, you can go, Mr. Sherman.
Jennifer Sherman, 10 Sylvan Road. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I am the mother of three daughters at Ox Ridge. My twins are both in fourth grade. There is no shortage of gratitude and respect in my house for our school administrations and Board of Education, even prior to everything we have faced and overcome in the last six months. While I'm speaking to you as a concerned parent tonight, I am also particularly concerned because I have also worn the hat of Ox Ridge PTO Chair and am currently serving my second year on the exec board of the CDSP. During both of these tenures, I've participated in several budget seasons where I have repeatedly heard about the need to closely monitor and properly address sections that are above what the district identifies as optimal. Class sizes at the elementary level continue to be an essential piece of our educational success. We have called for adequate resources and budget control to ensure the flexibility to adjust class sections when and as needed. I'm very glad to see that several classes across the district this year were able to adjust and stay within the optimal range, but unfortunately not ours. I'm neither a professional educator nor administrator, so I do not profess to have all the information or solutions here. That said, I do know that our students and our three exceptional fourth grade teachers just want to get back to the business of learning and teaching in the safe, supportive, respectful and intellectually challenging learning environment that they have been promised. So I'm asking that we figure out how to ensure that that happens here despite the seemingly undesirable position that we've been put in. Of all the things we sit in this room and advocate for, education always has to come first. As we've heard, communication and the ability to be responsive to the issues that arise will be critical to all students and families this year. In this particular instance, we appreciate the response that some parents received from Dr. Adley on how this happened. But my fellow parents and I are left with a growing list of unanswered questions and concerns. How will this be monitored? What happens if we do hit 26 or 27 students in a classroom? In order to accommodate their larger class sizes, both of my daughter's sections have been moved to portables. How are our children going to be safe and secure in these portables that we Darien parents have all been fighting to get rid of for years? How will that be managed during the colder seasons and ongoing construction at Ox Ridge? How will our teachers be supported when they already have so much to juggle and manage adjusting to online and hybrid learning formats with students who haven't been in a classroom in six months? And how do we prevent this from happening again in our district? Yes, of course, it needs to also be said that this is not the time to be further straining our teachers with suboptimal classroom standards, standards that were set in pre-pandemic times. We need to always set our teachers up for success so that they can do the same for our children, all Darien public school children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sherman. Do you want to go back and see if Mr. Dunn is able to comment?
Jonathan Dunn, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi. This is actually Melissa Dunn, so I apologize. But I wanted to, I live over on 175 Raymond Street and I am a parent of a Tokonique kindergartner and I have many concerns along with my husband on the failed leadership of the superintendent has shown as well as the lack of direction and oversight of the Board of Education has demonstrated during this frustrating period. Just to reinforce with Taylor and Greg and I think the woman who also spoke from Ox Ridge, I'd like to just discuss the remote learning experience my daughter had earlier today. This was her introduction to the Darien school system. And she, you know, with the assistance of me, her online learning today took all of 30 minutes. How is this considered education? How is she supposed to learn with just a half an hour? It's not the equitable public education our children are entitled to receive. We're really setting a bad precedent with the hybrid reopening as we are fully within the opening guidelines set forth by the Darien Public Schools. Just reading the guidelines and seeing what we're doing, it just boggles my mind. It doesn't make sense. How do we expect younger children to grow and prosper with the new learning prioritized on in-person days? This implies that only 40% of the curriculum will be delivered as long as this arrangement persists. Virtual learning is not appropriate for our younger children as we have seen over the last few months. Norwalk, New Canaan, Greenwich, other towns in Connecticut have students in at five days a week and I hope that Darren will realize that this is a better way to provide a fair and equitable education and be a leader in public education in the state of Connecticut. I moved here for the great schools and I don't want to leave because of the schools. I really appreciate having the time to speak and thank you for hearing our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Is there another speaker this evening?
There is. Julie DePonte, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, this is Julie DePonte of 444 Middlesex Road in Darien. First, I would just like to second the comments that were made by Taylor Carter and Greg Gambling and others about the reopening of the Darien schools with a hybrid model. Candidly, we need a response from the Board of Administration that is based on science and not just pure rhetoric. Second, I would like to echo the comments made by both Beth Morgan and Jen Sherman regarding the fourth grade class at Ox Ridge. This year, in the midst of a pandemic, the Darien Board of Education made the decision to eliminate a section of the fourth grade class at Ox Ridge. This resulted in two out of the three fourth grade sections at Ox Ridge Elementary being over the district cap of 24 students. In contrast, fourth grade classes at both Holmes and Royal gained a section this year. Holmes actually going from four sections to five, with classes in both of those schools averaging 14 to 16 kids. If Ox had just maintained the four sections it had instead of dropping to three, classes would have averaged 18.5 students per class, still more than Holmes and Royal. Despite repeated requests for an explanation, I personally have not received any response from Alan Adley or the Board of Ed for why this decision to treat different elementary schools differently within the district has occurred. We need an explanation. As a taxpayer in Darien, I demand it. I demand to know why my child's class is so much larger than his peers in other elementary schools in the exact same district. And I would ask that the Board of Ed consider the various comments that have been made tonight and add a section to the Ox Ridge fourth grade. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. DePonte. Next speaker, please.
Janine Bortel, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Hi, this is Janine Bortel. I live at 42 Huckleberry Lane and I am a parent in Darien with three children in the public schools. My youngest son attends Ox Ridge and he's in the fourth grade this year. And I too want to just reiterate the comments you've heard from Morgan, Sherman and then just from Julie DePonte. I am also concerned about the class size of 25, you know, which again, you've heard from them about. This is concerning to me for a number of reasons. Again, just to reiterate that I understand this is over the district cap and two-thirds of these classrooms currently exceed the cap and I have the same concern that if, you know, there are additional you know, different individuals come into the district, those will be over the cap for all of the classes. This class size also creates inequality between the elementary schools in the district. Class sizes at Holmes and Royal, as Julie pointed out, are between 14 and 16 children. In addition, the pandemic has changed the way our children are learning and increased the complexity with online and hybrid school. And I know you're all very familiar with that and I appreciate all the work that you're doing with the Board of Education to make sure our children are learning. But I believe now more than ever, we have to ensure that smaller class sizes so our children can learn as much as possible and make up for any mislearning or accelerated learning from last year, decelerated learning from last year. Finally, as a healthcare professional in the field of public health, I am concerned that this larger class size is a public health concern and puts my children, my child, at greater risk for contracting COVID-19 when social distancing and spacing are essential to stop the transmission. I urge you in the Board of Ed to reconsider the class size for Ox Ridge class this year and to move to add at least one section and teacher to Ox Ridge's fourth grade. This would allow classes of 18 to 19 students, which still exceeds the average class size for the other fourth grade classes in our district. I appreciate your attention for this important issue.
Thank you, Mrs. Bortel. Do we have any other speakers this evening?
We do. Krista Struck, you are unmuted and recognized.
Good evening. I would like to thank the board for their diligence in these unprecedented times and their attention to this very important matter. I live at 1 Dulane in Darien and have a fourth grader at Ox Ridge. She is our fourth child to have come to Ox Ridge and it's a very special school. One of the things that we've been so impressed with is a dialogue, ongoing dialogues at all times between administrators, teachers and parents and finding solutions to problems. The current problem that we are faced with is one which requires immediate attention. We have a fourth grade section at Ox which has been dealing in the past years at 16 to 19 and that now is busting through the standards deliberately and diligently arrived at over years of research. We are at classes of 25, 25 and 24. These numbers have risen rapidly in the last three weeks. So in the midst of this pandemic, which has negatively affected obviously all of society, but largely our children, we are reallocating our classes, which received nearly no learning for three months. My daughter had 20 minutes a week of live discussions and are being allocated to less classes and less learning. The other schools have far smaller sections and this was a decision that was made during the summer to protect their learning environment and provide the best possible outcomes in these trying times. My background in finance, I spent countless hours creating forecasting models that were hopefully in-depth and accurate. The biggest component was understanding the outside forces that could push things in either direction. These outside forces are the triggers that I think have not been adequately assessed in any way, shape or form with the planning process for this grade. This was a huge failure for the BOE in recent months as these outside forces should have been the biggest moving parts focused on in the recent weeks. Besides needing to recognize a failure of remote learning in the spring, this is a year where we need to model in the worst of circumstances, being fully remote and having a massive influx of home sales resulting in more children per class. This has been the exact situation that resulted in 22 children per class moving to 25 when other classes are 14 to 16 across the board for this grade. There are 33 homes for sale in Ox District, 22 in current closing. These classes are going to increase enrollment quickly. We have to move now and be in line and provide parity for the fourth grade. We also have to recognize that attempting to teach
Mrs. Struck, we are approaching time?
Great. After a lost four months with 25 kids is going to be a complete lack of sage decision-making. We have to do better. These caps are not meant to keep us honest and on track. They are meant to keep us at our best. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers this evening?
We have one more. User Quinn, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, thank you. This is Tim Kennedy and I live at 62 Sullivan Berry Road with my wife Amy and our two daughters, one of whom is a fourth grader at Ox Ridge. Thank you for your time and consideration and the opportunity to speak tonight. I don't know that I can articulate our family's concern with the class sizes at Ox Ridge any better than the others who have spoken before me. But I fully support each and every one of the parents who have stated that the Ox Ridge fourth grade class sizes are not only too big and bound to get bigger, but are to be honest, to be honest, I don't, I don't think this needs to be discussed extensively. It simply needs to be fixed. It is incontrovertible that an error has occurred. The fourth grade class sizes at Ox Ridge are too big. In addition, no right-minded person would agree that two schools should have 14 students per class while another in the same town should have 25. That disparity is without a shadow of a doubt wrong and unacceptable. We are sensitive to the fact that challenges caused by coronavirus are difficult ones, but this error is a serious one. Class size and teacher-student ratio are fundamental components of education. Why are the wheels not already in motion to fix this mistake? As you know, part of the education of our children, by teachers and parents alike, is how to overcome our inevitable mistakes, hurdles, failures. We try to give them the tools to recognize the error, help them to try not to repeat it or compound it, strive harder, find a solution, solve the problem. We ask you to put this important lesson into practice. Solve this problem, fix this mistake. We received an email from Dr. Adley wherein he stated he was shocked by the words of Maya Angelou, who said, quote, "Do the best you can until you know better." Then, when you know better, do better, unquote. Dr. Adley followed that with a pledge that this is what we will do this year. After this meeting, I suspect you will know better. We ask that you please follow Maya Angelou's words and Dr. Adley's pledge and do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers this evening?
Yes, we had a last-minute raised hand. Emily Shelley, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
This is Emily Shelley, 79 Inwood Road. I'll be brief. I know the last speaker. I just wanted to echo the comments about our youngest learners. I have two boys in kindergarten. They were thrilled to be at school today. But most of my friends feel the e-learning is either not worth the time or we simply, or a lot of us don't have the time for it because of the immense amount of parent involvement. And so I think that school for the youngest should happen in person or not. I don't think the remote learning is the best use of everyone's resources. I know it's so much work for the teachers to, to, to come up with those slides, but I don't know if it's a productive use of energy and I just wanted to, to say that a lot of us are feeling that way.
Thank you, Mrs. Shelley. Are there any other speakers this evening?
We have a few more. Victoria Bolton, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, this is actually Chris Bolton. I live at 14 Pointe Woods Road South. I'm Victoria's husband and the two of us are parents to two fourth grade students at Ox Ridge. I would just like to basically voice my displeasure at the discrepancy in class sizes across elementary schools that, in the town of Darien. I find it I find it unbelievable that Ox Ridge should have ten more students per class than other elementary schools in the same town. I understand that it was perhaps not anticipated that we would have as many students to bring us over the cap. But I do find it difficult to understand why an administrator would look at twenty-five students per class versus fourteen students per class and think that that was perfectly acceptable. And I would like an answer to that question, what the thinking behind that is, and have that, and I would expect that to be unrelated to COVID. This is, this is about providing education to our students, not anything else. And so I would really like to hear an answer to that question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bolton. Next speaker.
Christian, you are unmuted and recognized.
This is Derek Doody, one forty-one Brookside Road.
Could you repeat your name and address?
Second grader and a fourth grader. I would echo the comments with regard to the class sizes. I don't think anything more needs to be said in relation to that. I would also just make the comment that with regard to kindergarten, the two days on, two days off is extremely difficult for parents to manage, particularly where there's both parents working in the same family. It seems to me, at least, that the Board needs to make a decision to move to either full-time or not at all. And that will enable parents to actually make a decision in terms of what they need to do with regard to education for their children in respect of a lack of a proper kindergarten classroom experience. Thank you.
Could you state your name and address again for the record? We just missed it. You may have signed up. We'll try to circle back on that. Are there any other speakers?
At this moment, no.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. We will move on to the superintendent's report.
So good evening, everyone. I thank you for your comments from members of the public. I trust that your families had an enjoyable Labor Day weekend. We commence, obviously, all of our attention really has been on, all of our attention has been on the reopening of schools. We commence with six days of professional development, basically three days that were conducted remotely for staff and three days onsite that included health and safety protocols, classroom setup, compartment and grade-level professional learning, teacher wellness. We had three keynotes that went over very well. Teacher wellness, technology and equity and innovation. So those were the three keynotes that were very well received. I want to say a big appreciation to the members of the community, the teachers and the staff for their tremendous efforts in getting ready. Yes, it was hurt galant. And a lot of our staff, community members have put up with a lot of inconvenience, bumps along the road already, which we are going to have as we go along. But from the middle school band greeting the kids when they first got to school to the welcoming classrooms that we received in kindergarten and even for our seniors who came back to school. Our kids adapted very, very quickly over the last, what now are just three days. And I want to thank them for that, and I want to thank the staff for their tremendous efforts in getting ready, particularly at the classroom level. Like to recognize many of the central services staff for all of their efforts. But a huge thank you to particularly our classroom teachers and our parents. Also want to recognize that Darien Police Department have been working very closely with us, both on security and also on traffic management. And we have a couple of respects, perhaps at Middlesex and so on, that we'll continue to work on, but they have been a tremendous resource. Thank you to the Darien Times that's still trying to get, cover our opening day even under special circumstances. And our PTO for their generosity at the start of the school year at all of the schools. Strategic planning continues. There was a meeting today. The next meeting of strategic planning will be on September seventeenth. And it's our hope to bring to the Board at the next meeting a final draft for the Board's continual input, reflection, and ultimately adoption as they go through that process. We did hear about football and volleyball. Volleyball is planned. We're practicing inside, outside. They will be playing with masks. Football, we did hear this evening, thank people for their comments, that CIC and the State Department of Public Health have decided not to have full eleven-on-eleven. And there are a number of people who would like to see that happen and to challenge that decision. So it'll be a topic for continual discussion, but we heard some of those sentiments tonight. I won't go over all the Ox Ridge, but in essence, I'll give the, I had it on my announcements anyway. I'll give just the tenet of it. Yes, we did budget three sections. We held off setting the section's number as long as we could. In fact, much later in the actual year, it was later in the summers at the last meeting essentially, where we set the sections at twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-four. Subsequently since then, there are twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-three. I understand that some parents may have a different number. That's the exact number that we have that's been checked out at the school and also onsite. So some, some, some have gone up and some have gone down. It's been a fluid situation. There's about sixteen students who have been added. There are thereabouts at Ox Ridge. And essentially, two of those have been added, have been added into the fourth grade since those sections were actually set. For safety and security, whether it's the portables or otherwise, I'll be the first to tell you the portable is not the desired location for anything. But we go over the safety and security, no matter what grade level, no matter which student are in those portables. It's essential that we do do that and we prepare accordingly. So I understand that they're not desirable just for teaching alone in a period. But with that, I can commit to the safety of the actual facility itself. So those are, those are some of the contributing factors around the Ox Ridge. When we have twenty-four, yes, it was budgeted at three sections. We have twenty-four, which is in the upper end of the Board's policy. So the Board's policy itself was adhered to when the sections were set. And that's the way the numbers have essentially at this point played out. For the other schools, there's a number of issues there. The sections were set at budget time, so as were approved by the Board. And that's kind of the way it sort of played out. But there are some that the enrollment hasn't played out, so the classes are a little bit smaller. Across the way we've got it set out this particular year, some of the classrooms are particularly smaller than others because we have to accommodate the space. We have to make sure the desks themselves fit in the classroom. So there are some considerations that we need to make, we had to make. And the Board has heard those, what those were through the COVID seven sections, that we needed to make some breaks in that capacity. The twenty-five at Ox Ridge, that is essentially a double classroom. So the space for that is probably more accommodating than some of, more accommodating than some of the other classrooms because there's a double space part. So from a point of view of COVID physical spacing, it has just as much or more than some of the other classrooms. And some of the board members, some of the board members got to see some of the space in the school. So certainly will continue to consider options for that. But that's, that's the, that's the general history of the Ox Ridge. Special education, I'll just show that there are four special education paraprofessionals that will be required. And I'll go through the Finance Subcommittee for that. There are two students to return, and there are two that are identified as one-to-one needs. So I'll take that through the Finance Subcommittee and bring to the Board at the next meeting. I know in the past, there's been some discussion of paraprofessionals when we kept. Historically, I think there's some discussion about that. So I'm happy to take that under consideration for Ox Ridge moving forward. I'll certainly consider, consider that matter as I move forward. But at this point, there is no other body in there. I do believe the teacher can equitably deliver a teaching and learning quality experience. I understand it's kept. I don't want to downplay the twenty-five versus twenty-four, but I still think twenty-four, an extra student in there can be accommodated both speech-wise and educational-wise. I want to remind the community that Friday, September eleventh is actually a full day for students. And I think those are the main announcements for this evening. I'll talk about reopening once I get the reopen agenda item.
All right. Any Board Committee reports this evening? Oh, sorry. We'll approve minutes first. It's requested that the Board approve the following minutes, minutes of the special meeting and executive session held August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty, and minutes of the regular meeting held on August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty. May have a motion, Mr. Seeny, so moves, Mr. Burke seconds, all in favor. That is unanimous. Mrs. Stein is voting remotely this evening, so her vote carries. We will move on to any Board Committee reports. I'm not sure any committees had meetings in between.
For the Finance Committee, which is scheduled for next Thursday, I believe that's the seventeenth. So I'll be, I've already notified Administration, and I'll be looking to the Committee to find another time for us to meet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Struck. We'll move on to presentations and discussion. A report on summer school and the ESY programs for 2020. I think Ms. Stanton is presenting remotely.
That's correct, yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Mark.
I'm here too. I'm going to be showing, sharing my screen right now so we can all follow along with the presentation. I'd like to start, and I'm sorry, this is Mark Power, by the way. I'd like to start by thanking the Board of Education, Dr. Adley, and all the Darien Public School staff who helped make 2020 another successful year for Darien Summer School. I'd also like to give a special thanks to Vicky Festo and Caitlin Stanton for all their hard work as they had to stop and pivot during the peak of our registration and basically rewrite the entire catalog and help the teachers convert their classes to a new distance learning format. This new format came with some benefits. This year, we had participants from a total of nine different states, including Alabama, Kentucky, Virginia, and some as far away as Texas. E-learning also brought some challenges because we had students participating who didn't have Darien Public School emails. There were some issues accessing Zoom and Google Classroom. Fortunately, our IT department did an amazing job at quickly finding solutions to the problems as they arose. Just to quickly review who we are, Darien Summer School is a comprehensive, diversified learner-centered program, which is available to all students, grade kindergarten through twelve from Darien, as well as surrounding communities. We typically draw from surrounding towns such as New Canaan, Greenwich, Wilton, as well as Westchester County. Ordinarily, we have over a hundred and eighty offerings, which include academic classes for credit as well as enrichment. This year, of course, we had some limitations to the number and type of classes we could offer because we weren't able to have in-person activities. Despite our best efforts, we were not able to offer any athletic or theater programs. While all of our classes were remote, the structure of Darien Summer School remains similar to the past. The majority of our classes ran from June twenty-ninth to July thirty-first, and most were in two-hour blocks, either from eight-thirty to ten-thirty or ten-thirty to twelve-thirty. However, we did have some classes scheduled between twelve-thirty and three-thirty, and some others that even ran on Friday night and Saturday mornings. Because we were not able to offer as many classes as we have in the past, our enrollment was down from previous years as we expected. We had a total of three hundred and seventy-nine students, and these students accounted for four hundred and fifty-four registrations.
So after coordinating with our teachers and independent contractors, we were able to run approximately thirty different classes virtually this summer. We did run multiple sections of some of those courses and camps, and the programs range from academic credit-bearing courses such as Algebra I and Geometry to Art, Music, and Mad Science camps. Most programs used a mix of synchronous and asynchronous learning models. So we offered several new programs this summer. The Middlesex Voyagers Program was offered to incoming sixth-grade students to help prepare them for the various aspects of MMS, such as the digital portfolio and the social-emotional learning curriculum. We also partnered with Happy Code Club to offer several new programming and computer camps, which included 3D game design, game design in Scratch, and programming for virtual reality. The Bedroom Decor More class had students making trendy treasures and fashion accessories such as tie-dye pillowcases. And then because of the structure of the virtual program this year, we were able to offer a class like no other we have offered before. We had the Family Film Camp, which involved the whole household in the process of filmmaking and allowed participants to make great memories with their families. So as we typically do, we collected feedback from the parents at the end of the summer. And as you can see from some of the comments here, families always appreciate the great value and the engaging nature of our programs. Many of the responses also mentioned that while the programs went well this year, they would like to return to in-person learning next year. Even though we were virtual this summer, Mark was still able to bring some of our DSS spirit to the online community through the continuation of Fun Fridays. So the picture that you see here was from Tropical Day, and this is the Listen, Imagine, Create class. And the other Fun Fridays included America's Birthday, Sports Team Day, School Spirit, and Wacky Hat and Hair Day. And while we collected less money this year than in previous years, the revenue was slightly higher than the original projections from when the decision was made to move to the virtual platform. The discounts that you see noted on this slide include scholarships and employee discounts. So we are already beginning to think about and plan for next year. Of course, we hope to offer our programs in person, and we'll plan accordingly. We also will continue to consider new classes that we can add to our offerings. In the parent survey results from this summer, people indicated that they would like to see more academic courses as well as more coding and computer classes. So in addition to working on adding those in, I would also like to work on collecting feedback from the wider community, especially since our survey pool was a little bit smaller this year with the reduced number of students. We also will be continuing with the Online Campus Guide Registration System for 2021. This is an initiative that we started for 2020, but we were not able to carry it all the way through to completion when we went virtual, since campus guys were no longer needed. For this upcoming year, parents will be able to select the Complimentary Campus Guide Service when registering for classes instead of completing it in person the first few days of summer school. I would like to say thank you again to all those who supported DSS this summer. Despite the challenges, our staff and students came together to create positive and memorable learning experiences. As an example of some of these experiences, we would like to share a short clip from our Advanced Chamber Orchestra Group.
Thank you. Are there any board?
Any questions?
Board comments and questions, Mr. Burke?
Well, first, thank you. That's an awful lot of hard work and that was a great performance definitely made my evening. I was interested to see the note about the Voyager program. How many children participated in that? And do you feel that it was very helpful?
I believe we had about 30 students participate. I can double check those numbers, though. And the feedback that we got on it was positive. We felt like students did benefit from the program.
Thank you. And the other advantage too to having that was in the past, we've had some families who weren't able to participate due to timing. But the two transition programs were spaced apart, which allowed families the opportunity to choose one or the other.
Any other board comments or question, Mr. Maroney?
Yeah, I think what was exciting to me is hearing that we have remote learning from other states. So I think one of the discussions that have been had in not just this community but around is that needs to be more diversity. To me, this is a way to increase diversity very easily. To me, it's something we could look at doing for more in summer school, but as also as well as maybe that's how we can do the China program. Can we have sister programs in other states to discuss cultural issues and literature, social studies, or whatever it may be? I think it's a very exciting opportunity that could be done. You know, Plato said necessity is creative. A need creates problem which then gets solved. This is a way to do that. But my question basically comes down to is how did those student, how did those students access, find out about the program? And how did they, how did they come to do that? And should we have more outreach to get even larger groups if we do this?
Sure. So there were a couple of different programs that drew students from other locations. The biggest one was our Quiz Bowl Camp. So had two teachers for Quiz Bowl Camp this summer. And through their work with national Quiz Bowl organizations, they were able to spread the word and bring in students from all over. I also had some feedback from parents who shared the information with friends that they have in different locations, with family members. I had parents reaching out and saying that their child's cousin wanted to participate and be able to share this experience with family members from different locations. I also tried some Facebook marketing and paid advertisements this year to expand our horizons a little bit. I didn't see as much enrollment coming from that as I would have hoped, but it's something that we can consider in the future and we can continue to try and work on other ways that we could expand the program. Mark and I, in our discussions for planning for next year already, have talked about maybe running something like Quiz Bowl in a hybrid fashion. So having our own Darien local students in the classroom and then being able to livestream to people in other locations in order to continue that diversity.
Thank you. Other board comments or questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Power and Ms. Stanton. I know that it was difficult and much like schools, you reinvented quickly and you served the needs of our children as best we could, given what we had. So I appreciate it and thank you for the update in the report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Very much.
And we will move on to the update on reopening of schools. Dr. Adley, I would just ask. Oh, I'm sorry, E S Y, sorry, E S Y is after summer school. I didn't mean to forget you, Kristin. I see you in the bottom corner.
No worries.
Thank you, Mrs. Ritchie. And please, E S Y.
Yeah, thank you. Just before we begin this evening, if I may just, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the Special Education Program Directors who are here remotely with us this evening also. Laura Straighton, our E L P Program Director. Kristin O'Reilly will be presenting this evening. That's Department of Public Health Program Director for Secondary Education. And if I may just take a moment before I turn it over to Kristin. Good evening to the board members and to the Darien community. In April of this year, we had the opportunity to present the Special Education and Student Services E-Learning Update to the Board of Education. We shared several platforms. We shared our hosted slides, live instruction on Zoom and on Google Meet, recorded lessons and visuals that supported remote learning. We shared how psychologists provided social emotional learning, how OTPT and speech and language pathologists provided speech and language services, and how they did this in all their related disciplines. We also showed how power professionals found new ways to connect with and support our students, both in and out of the classrooms, and how colleagues discovered ways to support each other before, during, and after the school day. So we learned and were prepared to continue best practices in remote learning for our students during this summer's E S Y program. This evening, we're delighted to introduce Kristin O'Reilly. Hi, Kristin. Our Program Director for an elementary, sort of school, who will speak about the challenges and successes in our E S Y program during this 2020 summer program. Thanks, Kristin.
Hey, thanks so much, Shirley. Michelle, I'm not sure that I have the ability to share my screen right now. I'm wondering if you adjust that setting. Sorry, I'm not sure if. I can't.
Not yet, Kristin, but it will. Just so everyone knows where Kristin did rehearse this today twice. She does have this down.
So it is viewable on the B O E screen here and on the Zoom screen for the B O E, which which may be small for participants, but this will be posted as well. So if we want to move forward in the interest of time and then, Michelle, as you work your magic, that's great. But Kristin, why don't you, why don't you move ahead?
Perfect, sounds good. And Michelle, I'll just let you know when we're ready to go on to the next slide. So thank you guys so much for having me today. Before I begin, I actually just wanted to take a really brief moment to say how happy and excited we are to have our students back with us. The last few days have been so exciting to welcome them back, and I'm incredibly excited to help support the district in this new role. So I just wanted to take a brief moment just to say thank you for the opportunity. Similarly to what you heard from Caitlin and Mark about the DSS program, we had another successful and rather unique E S Y program this summer, being that we were remote. That certainly created increased opportunities for problem solving around such a unique situation. And I would like to acknowledge and commend our staff for rising to the occasion and for their diligence in supporting our students remotely. They were really quite incredible. As a part of the E S Y identification process, and Michelle, we can go to the next slide when you're ready. We held the majority of PPTs prior to school closure. Some PPTs were held remotely in determining E S Y eligibility following school closure, and several E S Y amendments were processed at team meetings in the spring in conjunction with school team recommendations and parent approval. We continue to consider the following areas when determining a student's eligibility for extended school year services. So we consider the nature and severity of the student's disability. We consider the learning that a student may need to attain independence related to their disability. The team must consider the potential extent of regression caused by an interruption in educational programming and the rate of recruitment following that potential interruption in the student's educational programming. We can go to the next slide. As an overview, we have listed here the 2020 goals coming out of the 2019 E S Y program in conjunction with the 2019 E S Y parent survey results, in addition to board and district goals. Timely and detailed communication with families, which includes an April 29th board presentation by Ms. Klein outlining E S Y plans, a May 27th parent letter announcing remote learning for E S Y, a June 2020 parent communication sent out by Mary Scalise and Christina Ulrich, who helps support the transition planning of E S Y. In addition to the end of program progress reports and cover letters sent home to families following the end of their child's E S Y service. Early program planning at the school and district level, which will be outlined in a timeline slide to follow. Reviewing past data to drive efficient hiring and resource deployment, which included a review and revision to the scheduling process, in addition to the electronic submission of staff application to work E S Y and earlier notification of staff hiring. Continued use of a priority structure for assigning students and staff, which includes partnering students with staff providers they are familiar with when possible, and ongoing communication with our transportation vendor as we plan for both E S Y scenarios, in person and remote. Next slide. We are pleased to report that in addition to our ongoing goals of early program planning and timely, clear, and responsive communication, we were successful in accomplishing the following achieved goals. Collaboration with our Darien Summer School partners, Mark and Caitlin, including detailed explanation at PPT meetings regarding the alignment of DSS classes to students' I E P goals. An improvement in the use of our online systems, which included the elimination of paper schedules. Our staff and parents receive student E S Y schedules electronically as a PDF attachment via email. And we facilitated email blasts to families and staff, which included several email communications with attached PDF cover letters. In addition, our E S Y program transportation continued to design routes as we planned for the potential in-person E S Y option, sharing those routes with our transportation venue. Due to remote learning, transportation was not required this summer for E S Y. Because we had a bit of a unique year this year, our typical E S Y timeline was slightly adjusted to accommodate the decision for E S Y to be provided remotely. Based on our E S Y goals and parent survey feedback, we began planning in September of 2019 for the 2020 programming, which of course, at the time, we thought would be in person. From September of 2019 to March of 2020, we held the majority of our E S Y PPTs. With, you know, as we stated earlier, some E S Y related PPTs occurred in the spring following school closure. In addition to E S Y team meetings resulting in E S Y amendments, capturing those recommendations into the finalized I E P. In February of 2020, you'll see that just prior to school closure, a majority of our E S Y staff was hired. Having said that, adjustments needed to be made following school closure and the decision for E S Y to be implemented remotely as our needs and the needs of our students change. In April, we communicated with families. Again, there was an April 29th board presentation with subsequent communication in May and in June, and utilized the April to June timeline to plan for E S Y transportation needs with the in-person scenario. In June, we communicated electronically the student and staff schedules with E S Y staff and again with families during the week of June 12th. We appreciated the patience and support of our families as we worked through scheduling changes due to a variety of factors, including availability and enrollment of our DSS classes and increased student need to have small group or individual remote instruction. And lastly, our E S Y orientation with staff took place on June 25th and began for students on the 29th, ending on July 24th, with two subsequent bridge weeks for students who require additional support beyond the four weeks of E S Y programming. Next slide. Similar to last year, the number of students attending their 2020 E S Y program was roughly the same this year at 235. You may notice that there was a decrease of roughly 20 students attending E S Y in E L P than what was recommended. We understand that remote learning may have posed challenges for some students in that age range and may have contributed to that parent decline of E S Y service. Next slide. On the next slide or on this slide, we show an increase of 14 certified and non-certified staff between 2019 and 2020. Because we were remote, we needed to look at different systems and structures with regard to our remote schedule and staffing. And we attribute this increase in staffing to an increased student need for small group or individual instruction due to remote learning. Increased problem solving and prioritizing opportunities for familiar staff to work with students they have previously provided service to. And staffing needs related to remote learning, the the remote learning schedule as it compares to the service delivery when typically in person. Next slide. Annually, we send out an E S Y survey to families to collect their feedback on their experience within the following domains. Our general information, program communication, program implementation, and the E S Y program and Darien Summer School program. Typically, there's also a section for transportation, which was not needed this year. Due to our remote learning model for E S Y, the following domains were also added to the survey. E S Y remote learning and a section for E S Y technology support. We had hoped, as in previous years, to have the E S Y parent survey sent out in August. Although it has been ready for some time, we apologize for the adjusted timeline and we know that you can appreciate our efforts in reopening schools and in welcoming back our students. For your convenience, we have the survey linked into tonight's presentation, which will also be sent out at the building level in the coming days. Thank you so much for your time and we're happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any board comments or questions, Mrs. McCammon?
Thank you, everyone, for the presentation. I appreciate the continued focus on this program. It's important for a number of our learners. They really need that summer instruction and having the program run well and really focus on their needs in a meaningful way is exciting. I think the numbers of the fact that you had a similar number of kids, at least in the K through 12 cohort enroll speaks highly of the program. I am curious about your survey and I'm wondering if when you send it out, you will also send it out to the people who chose not to enroll. Specifically, I'm curious about this year, given the number of kids who did not enroll in E L P. It could be a valuable time to understand parents' perception of young children, young learners, and remote learning. So if that survey is scheduled to go out in the next short time, perhaps you could consider adding a look at that here.
Any other comments or questions, Mr. Burke?
Thank you for all the work. I know that you're early in the process of assessing aggression and recruitment, recruitment. Do you anticipate that there'll be additional staffing needs going into next year, coming out of a year of COVID and mixed learning?
Perhaps, Mr. Burke, won't really answer that and then any other members can join in. I think whatever decisions are made that that require I E P changes to I E Ps based on students' current levels of performance, that will happen at the PPT level. It may impact E S Y, it may impact current programs during the academic year as well.
Thank you.
Mrs. Klein and/or anyone else involved in this. Are there takeaways that as a group you've been able to sit down and say, you know, remote learning for this group of learners was thrust upon us that that next year, God forbid, if we needed to be in this situation, you found ways to improve and/or those parents who are concerned about remote learning, to Mrs. McCammon's point, you could re-engage them in some way through kind of a lessons learned pattern?
So I'll begin a response and then anyone please join in also. I think our takeaway is, and I think that's why we started with what we've learned since March 12th. We really did get better at our practices. We really learned different ways, time on task, how to break down those times on task with students while they're either live or or we're doing either posted lessons, to find out as many opportunities as having either in Zoom or in Google Meet, so there is reciprocal engagement. I think matching staff and students as far as going into this E S Y school year was really essential, making sure they have the same providers, so you didn't have new providers.
May I go back to E L P when ready?
Laura?
I just wanted to add a little color to the enrollment of E L P. I just want to make everyone or just aware that the birth to three system worked with the state of Connecticut and other funding sources to provide services for children who turned three during the COVID shutdown. So that would be March to August 31st. They would be gracious enough to continue their birth to three services while the district got up and running and completed an evaluation to determine eligibility. So many of the students that were, or you know, the reduction or difference has to do with the students remaining in the birth three system during the summer months.
Thank you. Mrs. Klein, did you want to finish up?
This is Bakhan?
Yes.
I think the other takeaway we learned is to get all hands on deck as early on as we can. You know, we learned that from paraprofessionals when we had them come on to support students. It was a couple of weeks into while we trained everyone. I think getting everyone on board right away. We have best practices in place now. We know how to really exchange information and support families. I think parent training became an important component for many of our learners also. So I think we're ready, willing and able, if we needed to, to have a more engaging opportunity for remote learning.
Great, thank you. Thanks. Any other board comments or questions, Mrs. McCammon?
Shirley, along the vein of lessons learned, can you comment a little on what you learned about the difference between remote learning and in-person learning and what you do when remote learning is more difficult or next to impossible?
So it's probably fair to say that we all believe in-person learning is a more effective form of learning for all age students. I think everyone's in agreement. I think what we learned to try to replicate that when we're doing remote learning to the best of our ability. So using Zoom as often as we can, using, and if we have to go to Google Classroom or different platforms that still have reciprocal engagement, even if it's not in a live forum, I think that's something that's essential to our learning also. I think we have recorded slides now also lessons. If you speak to the physical therapist, the occupational therapist, I think they have a repertoire of skills now that they can continue to use that we didn't have. So I think employing all of those opportunities will have a more successful remote learning if we need to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board comments or questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you to everyone who joined us remotely. I'm sorry I skipped over you. It is not for lack of enjoying the presentation and we thank you for all your work this summer. We will now move on to the update on the reopening of schools. Dr. Adley will lead us off. Dr. Adley, given that there was so much heard regarding both the K through two, remote learning, Ox Ridge and football, in your update, I'd like you to touch upon those. I imagine there are board questions on all those topics, but I'd like to give you a moment on those before questions come and then anything else regarding e-learning.
Sure, I'll touch base on a number of things, including those if I may. Thank you. Well, first, again, I just want to recognize the staff and our parents. Certainly by Friday's communication, that would cause inconvenience to families and I appreciate that and recognize that and appreciate their efforts to be supportive in that manner. It was important, I felt it was important for us to open on opening day when we made a commitment to open. And we were able to do that. And for our K through two students, it became apparent on Friday to me that this, well, first of all, I should say this. And no way am I saying kids weren't ready. Absolutely not, right? For us to open, have everything ready is my responsibility. It is no one else's. And I would never suggest that deferred to the kids or deferred to the staff. So I just want to make that very, very clear right up front. On a professional level, it was disappointing for me not to be able to have this live streaming ready to go for our youngest kids. But at the same time, I'm not going to roll it out and cause them more anxiety. It was clear that the students weren't going to be ready. It was clear that the technology, we had some hiccups with the technology. We've got one of the smallest departments, we rolled out. I think the lesson learned is like rolling out over 200 or 2,000 additional Chromebooks and so on and so forth. Prove challenging and all honesty, it did prove challenging. There were hiccups in the sense of some of those Chromebooks had to be re-formatted, re-established because the kindergarten Chromebooks, they were delayed and are still delayed, right? That was always the case, but we always had one-to-one. So that just proved challenging. We had a few misfortunes along the way from certain platforms not working that because they weren't working here. So for instance, iXL, Google, they were offline for periods of time. So it just seemed like things, one thing after another, contributed to that. And on Friday, it was clear to me that both my teachers were frustrated because their teaching the kids couldn't happen all the time for the K to two students as well as the students trying to log on themselves. So it was at that point, I actually spent, I probably found out about that at noon time. I spent a significant amount of time meeting with teachers to assess their readiness and there was a level of frustration and clearly the students would not have been ready, right? And it would have caused, I believe, our parents and our students more anxiety. So I'm not going to roll that out like that. I was hopeful that we would be able to do it in two days, but honestly, I felt that in order to make sure that we're ready for Monday, let's just give the four days and let the department get ready, troubleshoot things and be in a position on Monday to actually livestream. That's really what happened. And again, I appreciate our families working with that because I know that those cause inconveniences along the way. And I know that going online, the curriculum actually, the curriculum has always been the strength of this district and it's actually what's at the foundation of this excellent online and live streaming because the curriculum is there also. And it's actually fortunate that we do have it because we're able to roll it out. I appreciate the sentiments of some of the community members in terms of how they may interpret the rigor of it or otherwise, I understand that. But the curriculum is in a good state of readiness and it will continue to serve the district well as we go through any remote learning that we have to do. Buses were, we said the last time it's about 75% occupancy. I rode the bus the first day and went past a few stops and a few more stops. Certainly it was going to be half capacity. And even with the half, I'd say half, even with the half, some parents decided, you know, that they would drive their children and sons and daughters to school, which they did. I think that's slowly changing. I think some have seen, oh, there's not too many on that bus or I don't want to be in line. And that has sort of increased, so we're probably up around 80% occupancy or thereabouts. Emergency procedures for the start of school were reviewed again. I think I've mentioned that to you. C I C football, so. I mean, this is very frustrating for the kids, right? The whole interaction with C I A C and the State Department of Public Health. So the latest is, as I shared about volleyball can play and C I A C and the Department of Public Health are not letting basically 11-on-11 football to exist, right? It's not their recommendation that that takes place. I also have to say in that process, the whole way along in this process, I have been taken under consideration, the council of the medical professionals from the Connecticut State Department of Public Health, the Director of Public Health here in Darien and our medical advisor along the way. I will also still have to take their counsel on this matter, right? If there are certain parents groups, interest groups around this area that are coming together to advocate for the children and the athletes. We heard some parents tonight and I appreciate, very much value their passion, their advocacy for the kids and the advocacy for the program. For me, I can support it to a point. I can't argue against the State Department of Public Health or my medical advisor or my Director of Public Health on medical issues. So it's not a matter of supporting football for me. It's a matter of not arguing against the medical profession in terms of their recommendation. So if there's a happy medium somewhere, fine. If there's not, I would even have to say to this board that I would need them to take into consideration if there were some reason the board wanted to make a different decision, the council of our medical professionals. So I know there's some discussions that take place tomorrow. I'm happy to participate in those discussions. But that's one of the hurdles, should I say, right? That I would see in this particular process sort of moving forward. I think I've been upfront with why the decisions were made, right? And what will make us go back full-time or keep us out? The exact reasons why we're out at the moment, why did we make that decision? We made it for a number of reasons. It was a trial entry into the process to see what issues we would have along the way, right? I think the board is, and I very much appreciate the board walking around, members of the board who were able to walk around some of the schools with us and see from elementary school, middle school, high school, just what the teachers are dealing with, what the students are dealing with, who have done a tremendous job hitting the platform, running both teachers and students. And just some of the logistics that we got to work out. So I've been upfront with, I've been looking at that data, right? The data I have always said suggests we go back full-time. Right? I recommended that we didn't go back full-time because I think it was a reasonable and a good entry level into testing the system somewhat and testing the protocols that we had along the way. It was supported by the Director of Public Health and our medical advisor. We also work with some of the, we try and collaborate with some of the surrounding school districts, but honestly, from one week to the next, we tend to change all over the place. But at the time, that was also a reasonable expectation to keep somewhat in line. One or two were off that. I think it also gave the staff confidence over, I've only got three days, right? But I'm hoping it's given the staff a little bit of confidence to try some things out, to get accustomed to the health and safety practices, to review some practices. I will say this, I would like us to find a better way if we can for when the children come back, and this is one of the lessons learned already. Is there a way that we can social distance our students to six feet for lunch? I think that's a challenge for us and we've recognized it as a challenge and we're determined to try to bring people to the table to try and solve that challenge. And this couple of weeks gives us a wee opportunity to actually do that. So those are some of the things that have happened the past couple of days. The past couple of days, this bump in the road aside, right? The kids for two days and the teachers for two days were fabulous. I hope you felt that around the time because it was real. The kids wanted to be back, the teachers wanted to be back. The teacher spent an awful lot of time connecting with them. That's what we asked them to do, right? Make them feel welcome as you normally do. This is a particularly special year. Go out of your way as you normally do and they did that. So those are some of the things that Ox Ridge, I just sort of spoke about Ox Ridge in terms of, I'm not sure if you want me to go over the numbers again or the safety or the spacing. But for spacing, again, I think the spacing, all the schools throughout the district, they all have, as you know, some of these classrooms are different square footage. Some of them only fit 15 in a class. Therefore, we had to split those classes. Some of them, in this case, can hold 24 and actually a wee bit more. Not to say that that's what we want to do or want to do. But the spacing, I believe the spacing is fine as it's fine for the three feet spacing that we have throughout the district for this physical distancing. We'll continue to look at the Ox Ridge numbers. It is the only one relatively, as I look at the numbers, it's really the only one that's really, for the most part, sort of tipping. Well, for the most part tipped, definitely tipped. And other ones that are, there's not too many that are really close, to be honest with you. So that is the one. So I would understand that coming to the table as a concern. At that, I would.
So I think what I'd like to pick up because what I've heard and I think we need to clarify as a board is certainly board roles and administrative roles. And I think that probably flows through all of these issues. So I'll start with Ox Ridge, but as we, I actually have questions on all three issues. So I'm sure all other board members do. So some of what we heard was that the board is violating its class size policy. When the board sets sections and we did grant the authority to allow the extra time for that, we were at our max limits or under.
You're at 24, 24, 24, which is exactly at the limit.
Yes, so just for the sake of new members, the public listening, this happens often that sections are set and then the max is broken at some point during the year. In the beginning, because at some point we have to hire teachers, we have to have classrooms and it changes. That is not an aberration. I do understand the parents saying there's a COVID and there's a class size issue. This is why we often have conversations about budget control, why budget control is such an important tool that we have. But I will say the practice in Darien has been, should a section break, to provide extra assistance in that classroom. So one of my questions is, do we have that ability that year? Can we utilize budget control? Because that's been the accepted practice. I don't even know if Ox Ridge has another classroom for space, but we don't typically break sections and add full sections for one student tip over. Sections do break each and every year, but we do usually add a parent educator and/or if we have teachers whose day has changed to aid the full-time classroom teacher.
So the space, should it somehow, some way be split and an extra section? There's a classroom because there's really two classrooms that the 25 are in. As be my experience here, that that is the paraprofessional, the addition of a paraprofessional has happened in some cases and has not happened in other cases where it may, a class may have tipped. So it's a practice, general practice. It's not a policy, I don't think. In fact, I know it's not a policy. But I just know last year we had some that tipped and we did do paraprofessional and there perhaps another one that did not have a paraprofessional. So that's sort of my relatively short tenure experience.
So my thing would be maybe you and the building administrator can look at what the makeup of that class is and whether that would aid, given that I think we do have a class in a portable outside of the building and there may be, there may be a need for help for managing that as well. Mrs. Ritchie?
So just, I mean, the section sizes that we have in our policy are guidelines and recommended ranges. And obviously, we don't want to see classes go to the top of that range. But I echo Tara's comments that if we're finding with this larger sized class that there's a need for additional support, I'd hope that we keep an eye on that and make sure that if resources are needed, that we get them into the classroom as soon as possible.
Mrs. Ritchie, I think I just want to make sure I heard you correctly about if there's additional support needed to get them in the classroom as quickly as possible or to consider that.
If we're finding with this 25 children in that classroom, if there are resources that are needed as we know along in the year, that we get them into the classroom and that's why we have budget control. And that's why I wanted budget control to remain the same this year because it's situations like this that we need it and we need to act quickly. And that's why we have budget control. So if there's a resource that we need in that classroom because it's at the high end of our guidelines that we've given the administration, then I'd like to see those resources go into that classroom as soon as possible.
Okay, Mr. Burke?
Is there any plan to be in intense communication with the parents in those classes? It seems to me that you have to go beyond a number and make a real investigation as to what's going on in that classroom, in those classrooms. And if they need the additional support, they need to have it. And it may not be based on a particular number, but on a particular cohort in a COVID year, in a hybrid year. So I understand the break numbers and I understand why our policies are what they are. I mean, I voted for them, but we're in a different spot. We have parents who are telling us that there could be issues there. So I just want to make sure that we're talking to them all the time and that we're watching that situation very closely. And if there are more resources that are needed in those rooms, that it comes up quickly. But I get the sense that that's where you are when you said earlier in your comments that you're looking at options.
Yes, and I'm in clearly close consultation with the building principal, Dr. Forshaw. Yes, and I'm in clearly close consultation with the building principal, Dr. Forshaw.
Did I see another hand? Uh, Mr. Denim and then Mr. Maroni.
So I'm not sure I fully understood if.
Do, can you speak a little closer?
Yep, sorry. I'm not sure I fully understood, but if we had to break that class, is there physically space in that building to add another section?
Essentially, the class would be split into the, the, we, we would put, there's a wall separator, we'd put the wall separator back up. Again, it may not break like, it may not break, you know, 12 and 13, but, but you get, there's two spaces.
So you would have two classes inside of one portable, which is what the size of those portables are. Dennis?
Yeah, I think for just some background and information, you know, looking back through the enrollment report from last meeting, the projected number of students at Ox Ridge fourth grade was 70. And then it went to 72 as of August 19th. That was, um, Holmes was projected at 90 and then we had a COVID class because the classes are too small. So it's, it's, I, I understand the parents comparison of Holmes and Royal, but I don't think it's an apples to apples comparison because you're dealing with a small classroom that you couldn't socially distance, that we had to expand the classrooms to allow more classrooms so the students could spread out because the classrooms at those two buildings are very small. So I think it's not an apples to apples comparison. The other thing, there's two other things is one, um, some of the public comment tonight was that, you know, there's a lot of houses for sale and there's going to be an influx of students. We've had 18 students more from what we projected. That's all. It's not a massive number. There were 13 total in K through five, six total in middle sex, one minus at Darien High School. So yes, there are home sales, but people move out as well as move in. So it can be, it might be neutral. We don't know as far as projecting that. But I think the biggest question is, is what are the, what is our, our plan? You know, if, if the, the doomsday scenario that, I don't know if doomsday is the wrong word, but the, the worst case scenario is, you know, these 33 homes that, that people were referencing are for sale in Ox Ridge. And every one of those has fourth graders, maybe twins in fourth grade. What do we do if there's an influx of 40 kids in, in Ox Ridge fourth grade?
So we've been waiting like all summer for the influx. And actually, I'll just be honest, pushing the, the date where I set these class sizes was also a contributing factor to our teachers getting their classes, uh, class rosters on time, setting the classes. All of that stuff was a tad later than normal because of, because of just pushing that out a little bit. Mr. Maroni, honestly, it would be, to me, it's no different than any other year. If there was an influx of some, of, of students and we were close to capacity or otherwise, I would have to bring it back here if I thought educationally, regardless of budget control or regardless, if I thought educationally it needed to happen, I have to come back to the board and ask for the addition of that resource. And I would be prepared to do that this year, next year, uh, as I see those needs come forward. But.
But so I think the interesting thing here is if, if the numbers you have is 25, 24, 23, the 25 class is actually over our optimal class size policy, but the grade hasn't broken yet. The problem is it's a small grade overall. So you actually could have, and, and maybe not because of COVID socially distance, a class still of 24, 24, 24 and be on policy. So if, if per se, we didn't have budget control or budget control had been utilized, we had to go back to the Board of Finance and said, we need to break a section. I imagine the first question would be, have you gone over enrollment? And the answer actually would be no, we haven't. So I think that's where we're asking the community to understand the balance we have here. I think Mrs. Ritchie makes a great point and I have as well, that this is why budget control is so valuable. Cause if we have to make a decision quickly, that is what allows us to do it. But I think that's what's going on with fourth grade. Overall, you have a smaller grade. And so if some of these schools that had 90, they're at 16 because we had to break. There, there was no option. I understand having a kid who was in the class in the fourth grade when it hit 26 at Ox Ridge years ago, I understand it. I would support more aid in a classroom in a difficult year where, where kids, kids have been out of school for a long time. I think that's something if the administration is ready to bring back, the board would be willing to hear. But I think there's a lot of factors and certainly the factors that the Board of Education was not watching the numbers, nor that at the time we set sections, we ignored V O E policy. And I think that's, I know that feels unsatisfactory, but it is not because we don't care about education and it's not because we're not willing to work out a tenable solution, but we're looking at a very multi-factor situation is how I currently understand it. I think if the administration is willing to come back to us with creative solutions, I think everyone on this board would be willing to hear it. They might not agree with it. I'm not presuming how you're all going to go, but I think we'd all be willing to hear if there is an acute need. Mr. Denim.
So I guess just to state it again, the reason that you haven't moved one or two students around is the physical classroom size.
The physical classroom size accommodates the class, yes. And by using that second class, it's, it's probably, the spacing is probably a little bit better than some of the other classes.
Than if you moved one into the 23 class to bring it up to 24?
Correct. The, the thing about the 20, moving the 25th kid into a 23rd, do you, do you want it to be yours? After the, you know, after you've started school, that's a tough. Even if you split the class, it would be interesting to see like who wants what teacher and so on and so forth. That, that's a whole other discussion, but which I'm sure might arise.
So if there's no more Ox questions in particular, I'd like to, I'm sorry, Mr. Seeny.
We keep talking about optimal class size. What, what's the actual range that, you know, would, would trigger? What's the number?
The maximum range is 20, 24 is the breakpoint in a classroom we have. But we've always said optimal. We have not set a hard and fast.
It's recommended. It's not.
Okay. So it's a recommended optimal 24 students in class, elementary class. Okay.
It's a maximum range.
One for Rich. What, what's the balance of budget control right now?
So we haven't used budget control, but in terms of sections, we're four over.
But what's the actual dollar amount that?
About 138,000.
All right. Thank you. And I guess I'll move on to the rest of the discussion then.
Okay. Um, I don't mean to over direct it. I'm just trying to hit the big issues we heard tonight. So the K through two learning, I think the board was also surprised to receive the email Friday night. I think that if we could learn a little more and/or board members have questions, certainly there were some concerns. One comment was made that a third grader, I believe it was Ox Ridge, had had no live instruction for over six months. Can you talk a little bit about what was rolled out today? If you've received any other information, other public comment, how it was received and/or how that can be expected to change for parents who are looking? And do you believe that there were students who, I think the board would, would come to a surprise for a board if we heard that there's been zero live instruction per student for six months?
I mean, I, I honestly, I would have to look at that parental student matter on a one-to-one basis. I, I can't, I find it surprising that we haven't had for, for six months since, since March. But I'd, I'd need to look at that individually, to be honest with you. Chris, would you mind talking a wee bit about the, the actual curriculum itself?
Absolutely. So what we rolled out today are lessons in reading, writing and math. Those lessons were initially intended to be on top of students zooming in for a live morning meeting that would help set the day. So contextually, these are the first reading, writing and math lessons that a kindergarten student would ever have experienced. And so they were unfortunately facing this without having that, that guidance beforehand. The lessons are slide decks that have teacher voiceovers with them. So they're not looking at flat, flat slides. Flat slides are just when there's nothing but words or pictures on a, on a slide. But they have either a video or the voice of a teacher that talks through them. And so as a result of the change this week, students have two days of that and two days that are in person. And it's, um, there was a comment that I just want to make a connection to, that it's typical that we introduce new learning and then we practice the new learning. So for there to be those two lessons is, is, that's, that's not unusual that there's two points of new learning and two days of practice and how things are set up.
Mrs. Ritchie.
So I, I can't remember who, but someone during their public comments said that the, they're not getting the same curriculum because when they're in school, they're learning the new. And then when they're at home, they're not really, I mean, it was implied that they're not really learning. So they're getting, I think it was, the person said 40% of the curriculum. Is that an accurate assessment of what's happening?
Not quite. So the, the pace to start the year is slow because what we heard loud and clear is we need to address the S E L needs of students. So more time has been attributed to S E L. And one of the ways that you address S E L is not, aside from content, you need to make sure that you're introducing new material in, at a reasonable pace and not over assessing students right away. So that's all part of a larger picture. That's hard to see when you're facing these slides on, on the very first day. And the cycle that we have to remember is we're always, we're preparing students, we're presenting the learning and then we give them an opportunity to practice. Our kindergarten students had about an hour of time to prepare for their first day not being in school. So that is, that is not ideal. And as Dr. Adley said, it's an inconvenience and we're working through it the best we can.
I saw another hand. Mrs. McCammon.
Thank you for that. I was wondering if you could build on it a, a little bit. I think some of the concerns coming from parents are, have a lot to do with being left behind and how are we going to catch up? And we've talked about it a little bit at this table before, but I think it's one of the drivers, particularly for our youngest learners who need a lot of parental support and who are getting a lot of foundational work that will underpin what they would be doing later. Can you talk about sort of your vision for how these kids are going to progress through the next couple of years so that they don't have an enormous gap in their learning? And so that we know that they are proceeding at an appropriate pace?
I'll start by saying we're going to know a whole lot more in a few weeks. But in align with the state guidance on assessment, we're not welcoming students back this week and doing all of the benchmark assessments that we typically would do in those first couple of weeks of school. And that trade-off has to be there if we're actually going to spend time addressing S E L. And the other important piece is we're spending time with kids on developing these technology skills so they can gain independence to do the work at home. We can't expect our youngest learners to have, to have this independence if they've never learned the skills. And that goes for the students who are not only our kindergartners, but our first and second graders who had an extended period of, of time learning at home in the spring. But they never had the, I'll, I'll say the opportunity to learn how to be, how to learn that way. So that's really the focus right now. As I've mentioned in the past, we're going to focus in on our first grade readers because that's an, an important benchmark that we need to, to have. And so we'll, we'll start there. Uh, and once we, number one, see where their levels are to see if there is a gap and, and a big loss, we can make that part of the plan. And then once we go from our hybrid to our all-in, we'll be able to adjust our pacing guide accordingly. We cannot move as quickly in hybrid as we can in all-in. That's, that's the way it is, but we can get faster than we are right now as we start the year.
Mr. Seeny.
We heard earlier, all-in or face-to-face education is the best way to educate. I don't think that comes as a surprise to any of us. Would you ever reconsider the K through two cohort to go back all-in two or three weeks earlier than the rest of, I guess three weeks will be next week, but two weeks or a week earlier than the rest of the school population, given the challenges?
Well, I would never rule anything out. Let me put it like that. So if, if things were to dictate that we needed to do that, I certainly wouldn't rule anything out. Uh, it's not something I, I, I would be recommending at this particular point. I think as one of the, the parents said, perhaps it was Mrs. Carter, that we would hope this wouldn't go beyond this particular week, and that's true. Uh, I don't anticipate it going beyond this particular week. So at this point, I'm not thinking about that, Mr. Seeny, in terms of like as a realistic option at this point, but.
I guess the follow-up is what would be holding you back from, from pursuing that option? What are the complexities that I don't foresee?
Uh, the complexities at, at the minute are still the complexities of put me into a remote learning, which is the rec, uh, recommendations supported by the medical professionals to do a transition into the plan to start with, right? Just because we're still working out some, we're still working out some, uh, some procedural matters, process matters, technology matters, teaching and learning matters. I, I think that transition provides our students and our staff with the best opportunity to be successful at this point.
Uh, Mr. Burke.
So at this point, we're what, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14 days away from teaching days, unless I'm missing, and I may well be a day off in there, but that's the amount of days until the plan is to go to the full.
Mr. Burke, could you speak into the mic?
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Right now, we're about 14 days or so from the 29th in terms of teaching days. Is it easier to try and resolve these technical issues and get these kids into a better learning environment, the K through two learners? Or to sort of reverse coursing and come up with a plan to get them into school? I mean, I don't pretend to know, but I mean, those are the two choices. Either resolve these technical issues and get them up and going or try and get them in earlier. I mean, which is more doable, do you think?
I think I've, I've been very clear that I would like to get kids into school, our students into school as quickly as possible. And I'm doing that in the best way that is the best interest of, of the kids, the staff and the school community. At this point, I, I, I would not be recommending that. I might change your mind. If I ever change your mind, I'd come back, I would come back and tell you that.
Thank you.
Mrs. Ritchie and then Mr. Brown.
So just back to the K two curriculum as it stands right now in the hybrid model. Is there a way to make it more robust? In other words, more supplemental work for the children while they're remote learning? I just found today that there were lots of gap, gaps in time where there wasn't much to do. So if there's a way that we can provide, if a child has the ability and has the time, here's some supplemental work you can do independently.
So after we get through the first couple of days, parents will see in the slides that there is something called an extension for every area. So yes, that's already planned for and it's there.
Mr. Brown.
Hi, just, just two questions. You mentioned that the health official here in town, and you mentioned his previous agents.
Yeah, sure.
Haven't asked, I'm sorry, are in support of the slow transition, the three-week transition in?
Yes.
You've never answered, were they supportive of a full going in as well?
Uh, they're, they're supportive of the plan, current plan, recognizing that nothing changes, that we're in a hybrid and we are, we are going and we will be going back to school on the 29th. So they are supportive of that.
Were they supportive, based on the state guidelines, of the plan to send everybody in in-person learning initially, in addition to being in support of?
Mr. Brown, we just, just.
Sorry, it's a little hard. Yeah, no, I apologize.
The opening sentence, just, I just wanted to make sure.
So, so yes, I understand that our health official approved the hybrid learning plan. The question's never been answered that I've heard, and I apologize if it was. Did they also support a full integration with the normal start date as well? Do they say that was a no or did they say that was okay as well?
So, so I did not present to them, I want to go back full-time right now. So, so that option wasn't in front of them, that's just as a specific option.
Got it. So when they made an opinion, it was only on the one decision of the hybrid model. It wasn't a full in.
Yes. Can you, essentially, can you, can you support this?
Thank you. And then the other question I had is you mentioned tonight, student anxiety and the contribution, student anxiety, student anxiety in K through two. If we, you know, were to move ahead with live streaming, how, how did you measure the student anxiety? And conversely, were you able to measure anxiety for not going ahead with live streaming? What were the metrics for that?
The measures are at, at working with children, giving a kindergarten something that doesn't work and expect them to actually work it out. It's not, it's not going to work. It's the frustration of the parent and the kids. I also spent an inordinate amount of time, well, not inordinate, a significant amount of time on Friday talking to the staff in terms of the students, uh, the kids ready to stay, the professionals that work with the kids. The staff wasn't completely ready with the state of the technology and the hiccups that we're having and couldn't get the kids there. So I depend, I depend in large part on, on, on my staff to give me that feedback, David.
So, so it'd be correct to say that the main driver was not student anxiety?
It's not. What?
What? Would it be correct to say that the main driver in the decision was not student anxiety?
I don't want to, I don't want to fix it on just like one thing. It would have caused that. The students wouldn't have been ready. The teachers wouldn't have been ready for it, right? Given the state of the use of the technology. And I didn't want to increase that for any of them.
So is it fair to say that the plan as we laid out would not have come off this week, either for teachers, students, or parents, which I think this board would at some point like an autopsy, excuse the phrase, for why not? How did that happen? But, but you knew it was going to happen. So you made you pivoted for this week?
Yes. Look, I mean, I have to say very, very respectfully, we quickly forget, certainly not being condescending to anyone or otherwise, we're in a pandemic health crisis, and there are things that are going to change in this. Yes, I would have liked to be ready for day one. We were. I would have liked to have livestreamed for K to two. Unfortunately, I had to, believe me, the last thing I want to do is is communicate on a Friday evening with my community, or my board for that matter, that I have to, that I have to pivot. But I do it in the best interest of the students.
No, I just would like to say quickly as a follow up, I definitely appreciate seeing that email before it went out to the parents. So thank you for that courtesy.
So one thing that was concerning to me that there was a comment, and I think it's important enough to kind of quell that, like allegedly, we weren't prepared, as if there was something nefarious going on. I think from this board standpoint, we, and I believe in the administration from the notification we received, that the parents received as well, that that this was, this is not that, you know, it was allegedly not prepared, that we found after two days of orientation that it wasn't going to go off as we had planned. And so you made a change. But there, I mean, I do think sometimes the comments, we have to make sure we're very clear with the public. It's not like we just let everybody know Friday night. This board found out Friday night, I think every board member found out because the administration, the curriculum department, the tech department, tech ed, realized that this was not going to go as planned and therefore came up with an alternate plan. Would that be true to say?
That is absolutely true. At 12 o'clock, it became apparent to me that there's a problem that you may say, well, you should have known before 12. Well, I'm just, I'm just giving you the sequence. And after, after school, I had to call all the principals together to assess the extent of, I was in one school, I talked to a lot of teachers in that school, that concerned me greatly. And I had to meet him with the principals, and then I had to make a decision that I that I felt was in the best interest of the school community, and particularly our youngest kids.
Mr. Dineen.
So with that said, I would say, what is, what's the plan to remediate this? Like, what is the plan these next couple of days? And then, in just listening to some of the parents' comments, I think, and we've talked about this a lot, I don't think we can communicate enough as to what's happening and why it's happening. So, you know, do we have a pilot? Do we have a group of students? Are we working with the PTO or any of these other elementary organizations that support these schools so much to try this out, to pilot it, to test it and get that feedback? I mean, what's happening Wednesday, Thursday, Friday? So we have the week to get this organized. So we're a go on Monday.
So the first part is the from the systems technology, and we have tech support on the ground at all of the elementary schools every day this week to make sure that there's no issues with how devices are configured.
Chris, can you just speak a little closer, I think with the fan?
Sure. So the, should I say that again?
Yeah.
From the systems technology side, we have tech additional tech support in every single building, every elementary school, every day, to help with any device configuring issues that might arise for students while they're in school or for parents at home. If anyone's having any issues, they need to do a ticket, and that will be addressed. I do know that about 1,000 tickets were addressed today. So that means we are getting through the the challenges. They're minor, and they can be fixed, but we need to know where they are.
Can you just repeat, how many tickets were today?
1,000.
Wow.
So that's a lot of tickets. And these are mostly about log on and access.
Yeah.
But it gives you an idea and the people at home an idea of if students went home and had to learn with their devices and livestream first thing this morning.
Yeah.
And could not get on, that would have been a bigger barrier than the plan that we came up with to wait until we are sure that they can get on. So the other piece is what kids are learning in class. And so that is how to log on with their teacher instead of how to how to log on their first time with their device from home without having had that lesson. So those are the two most immediate. I'm meeting with our library media specialist tomorrow as well to develop the longer term, like by the end of six weeks, this is what we want to make sure can happen and have a landing, a landing space for each of those weeks to kind of move the work forward.
I think you've also tried.
Oh, sorry, I would, no, that's all right. I would say 1,000 tickets would cripple most organizations if it came in all at once in terms of being prepared for that. So you got through 1,000 tickets today. Do you have what you need to have another 1,000 tickets tomorrow? And is the communication out there to these folks that you've got to try and sign on, you've got to test it, you should test it every day, you should test it twice a day? And are you comfortable, you have the support you need to get through 1,000 tickets a day?
I'm comfortable because I don't anticipate that we could possibly have that many again tomorrow, because we had half of the students in school today. And we worked through with those students there. So if we have 500 or less, I think that's a move in the right direction. And the good thing is that the tickets that are left are the bigger issues to handle. The tickets that we've made it through are the more manageable.
And you have the support you need to get through this?
I touched base with our IT director, and he felt like they were in a good place at the end of the day today.
So Mr. Maroney, I saw your hand go up. I just, oh, Dr. Adley.
I just, I just would say, in fairness to the tech department, who've, some of these people worked all this weekend, and I want to give them credit for that, right? And acknowledge their efforts. The bigger picture of staff and moving forward for that department may maybe a discussion we have to have. In fact, there's going to be a discussion we're going to have to have, but that's, that's a different time.
That's, that's, I mean, that's this group of people, which are phenomenal and working all weekend is great, but I'd rather see a hand raised and say, I need help. I need more bodies. I need more help to get this done. Time is of the essence. This is emergency. I mean, there should be almost a war room set up to tackle this stuff. And there should just be constant communication back and forth, you know, between the board and the administration as to, I, I, I got to be honest, I feel sometimes there's a hesitation for the hand to be raised and say, I need help. And there's nothing wrong with that, because this is all new for all of us.
Yes, that's true.
And it's all unique, and it's all different. But to me, 1,000 tickets in one day, I applaud you and the IT team for getting through that. But I'm assessing, I'm feeling you guys might need some help, and I, you really need to raise your hand and say, I need help.
If we need additional help, given what we got through today, we'll get additional help then.
Okay.
Mr. Maroney.
Yeah, I'm thinking along the same lines as Mr. Dineen. And one of the comments that during the health seminar that Dr. Kefinek was talking about, or he referenced very quickly, he said, different districts are going to try different things. And to me, I interpreted that as, this is a whole new environment for everybody. So some are going to go to school Monday, Tuesday, half day Wednesday, some are going half day Wednesday, some are going all in, some are going all remote. And my thought was, we would, the superintendents and other and boards of education would collaborate on what worked, what didn't work. So to me, have we reached out to other districts to how have they solved this problem of K through two, as opposed to trying to do it all in house?
So I have weekly meetings with my colleagues in the surrounding areas. So I'm in close collaboration.
Has anyone found a better way or anything innovative on how to solve this problem?
This particular problem, both, a lot of the districts are doing exactly what we are doing. Once we get the actual hardware formatted, up and running, corrected, whatever that happens to be, the actual model itself, I don't mean the model of the computer, the model of the teaching and learning, tends to be the same. So it's, it's a matter of readiness for, to be able to deploy that 2,100 extra computers.
So Dennis, I would pick up on something both you and Duke said, and Chris. I think, one, internally, we need to make sure departments aren't siloed and collaborating curriculum, tech ed, the actual tech department. I think that that flow is going to be very important this year, whereas maybe the overlap is is less in other years. And then Dennis, I think I do think you make a good point. I will tell you that board chairs around the state are looking to do that and bring information back to their boards. Schools need to open in order to try it out. And, and you know, as a scientist, like the experiment needs to go and readjust. I think that's where we need to ask the, we need to ask the public to come along with us in that. I'm just starting to see, I have a board chair called tomorrow. Just starting to see districts come online and feel exactly what we're feeling. We had a great plan, but then we realized this, or we liked our plan, but we need to readjust for one reason or the other. We need, I mean, we've seen districts right around us push back their start dates. So I do think that what you're talking about is vital for a board lessons learned. I think we need to go through the lesson as well. And so we all need to kind of go through it together and and know when we need to start and stop, accelerate, pause. It's, it's going to be new. I, Mr. Maroney, Mr. Brown.
Sorry, with a follow up to that, though, is so we've looked, I'm assuming in Connecticut, have we reached out to other states who have been open for two or three weeks already to see what they have done to get through this process to that point, Mrs. Al.
So other than?
I mean, I realize, it's not Apple State, different states, different, different requirements. But maybe there's a way.
I have not reached out to other states.
Nor have I. I'm just curious if you, you know, if we have anyone.
I have not reached out to other states.
Mr. Brown.
Chris, just real quick following up. Are we going to look at strategies to prevent the login issue becoming an issue to begin with? How it's actually pumped out to parents and distributed? I can mention from personal preference, I went into the red Chrome Book bag and couldn't find anything. So I was very happy to see the follow up email, but I don't know how these get pumped out, but if there's some way that parents could have a little more insight, that would really be helpful, hopefully, going forward.
Yes. The, just the immediate thing, just so I can say it for anyone that's listening, on our reopening tab of our website, if you go to reopening, there's a teaching and learning tab, and then elementary schools. There is an entire video instructional video on how to log into Zoom and everything that parents need to know there. I did push that out to three to five parents to do a practice before. I did not do that for K two because we knew that there were going to be configuration issues and didn't want to cause that frustration because they would be working on that in school.
No, I just personally would like to say, I appreciate getting that email this morning with the links. So thank you.
I saw another hand, Mr. Sini, and then Mrs. McCammon.
I'm, sorry. I'm all flummoxed with this. You know, I want to take it to a higher level, and I think we heard several comments this evening. I mean, pretty harsh language, abdication of duties, equitable distribution, failed leadership, failed oversight. And I, while I might not agree with every one of those comments, I think it's important that this board hears our community in terms of what our role is. We go in and review our policies, go back to policy 9110 and see what we can do as a board. I mean, hindsight is 2020, and this is not second guessing the administration and the hours, countless hours that they've worked. But there might be a better way that we can work collaboratively with both the community and the board, I'm sorry, and the administration to ensure that.
9110 is a legal status of the board?
I'm sorry?
9110.
Role of the board.
9100 is legal status, right?
9110 is role of the board and its members, general duties, specific powers and duties. So a lot of the things that were mentioned this evening kind of covered some of our policies, you know, such as number of teachers, budget revisions, curriculum changes, equal diverse and suitable education opportunities for all. So I, again, I'm not second guessing our efforts, or certainly not second guessing the administration's efforts, but in this guise of learning as we go in this brand new world, I think we can do a better job of working hand and glove with the administration, and maybe even providing some air cover in some of their decision making. I mean, you know, candidly, I don't know if the community knows this, but we found out about the hybrid model when the community found out. K through two, we found out a couple hours earlier. Summer school, I'm not sure we got a heads up on that. So I think through, again, better collaboration as a board with the administration, we can fulfill a role of representing our community in a better way, and also provide this air cover and help that, you know, the administration deserves.
Mr. Burke.
I appreciate those comments, and I think we can always look at ways to work better. But I would reject any comment from any member of the public that would suggest for a second that any of us here abdicated any of our abilities. I think there are people that don't necessarily know, or should they know or take the time to know exactly how the board works. The decision to open in a hybrid environment was properly placed with the superintendent. He reported on those reasons, which I found to myself personally acceptable. I mean, I think that all of us here at this table in this community need to understand that we are trying to do something extraordinary, extraordinarily difficult. And I think in typical, dare in fashion, we may, and we will end up doing this extraordinarily well. And the situation and the challenges we face on day three in our schools in this hybrid environment are going to be different than the ones that we face in day 50. So I think, you know, we all have our hands on the wheel. We all need to keep our focus on our jobs, which includes, which is includes listening to the community. But we have our work that we have to conduct here, and we need to understand that work. And I think that all of us here do.
Mrs. McCammon.
You know, I don't know how carefully everybody was following the CAE emails that we were getting, given the amount of work that we've had this summer. I do think CAE was pretty clear that we needed to vote on the plan before it was submitted to the state. We didn't, it didn't coincide with how our meetings went. From there, the actual decision yes to go hybrid, I think, Mr. Burke, you're correct, was, was the administrative, the administrations. That said, as a board, we are responsible for policy, for finance, and for curriculum. And to the extent that that decision touches on any of those things, we need to make sure as a board we're discussing. So I do think, in an extraordinary time, there are always opportunities to learn, and it is worthwhile to self reflect and move forward from this point.
So I would just say CAE offered the exact opposite guidance to board chairs. They, they said that the State Department of Education had empowered the superintendent to make this plan. I do know that there were some emails that then went out, said that boards could vote on plans. That was discussed by board chairs with the CAE policy experts online. They did say that what you could run the risk of is confusing the community over what authority you had and what you did not have. Part of that was, let's be frank, confusion from the State Department of Education over who would open schools and who would not. But CAE was incredibly clear with the board chairs on their every Thursday call that it was not a requirement of a board of education. I pushed hard on that because as part of Boards of Education School, policy is their job to open and close schools. I pushed quite hard that we were opening schools. That did not go. I think both our attorney, our superintendent, and CAE knows how hard. So I would just say that is a statement that at least in all the conference calls I participated on and pushed for, I was assured was not the guidance of the State Department of Education. I do think that we heard some strong language. I think Mr. Sini is correct about, we heard some strong language over, I think it was oversight, blindly supporting, and a failure of leadership. What I would remind everybody is I think the nine people up here are working really hard. Certainly since March 12, I have been in this office, and I think many people have been reading emails, have been doing work. You may disagree with the decision. I think we've been very careful to make sure we are not overstepping, that we are representing. I know sometimes that's not satisfying. I do agree that you can always go back and look and say, how can I tweak? What could I communicate better? That's fine. But I don't know. And when people call for board members to step down over the opening schools in a global pandemic, I would counter with opening schools is like opening a small country. You're responsible for healthcare, you're responsible for feeding, you're responsible for education. If you don't like the way people are doing it, and I mean this with sincerity, because we look to engage the community. If you don't like the way people are doing it, and I mean this with sincerity, because we, we look to engage the community. Every three years, you have the opportunity to participate. But I would say there's not one of the seats of the nine of us up here who have not at least poured their concern and their heart and soul into schools. You might not like it, you might think someone misstepped. That is also a fair criticism that the boards need to hear. And that's why I don't take offense to the comments, but I just ask you to temper it. The board was flicked off on Zoom tonight by a parent. I understand there's a lot of emotion. Just know that the nine people are, are your neighbors. They live in this community, we send our schools to the kids in this community and the professionals up here have done the same. So I think that there's value in looking back and seeing what can we do better as we move forward. But I also think we need to be very careful with the language we use, recognizing the emotion, that we don't disparage people from getting up and participating in our local politics because it's hard work. And, um, I really, I do thank the nine of you who have been up here and I thank the administration. It's not perfect, but as Mr. Burke said, we are in a global pandemic. It has never been done before in our lives. So we're going to work to do it right. There's going to be missteps and hopefully we pull together as a board and a community to move it forward for our children. Mrs. Ritchie.
Thank you for that, Tara. I wholeheartedly agree with that statement and, um, I welcome the public's comment and their feedback. And hopefully we can remain civil and, and be cordial to one another. But we have worked incredibly hard. We have heard a lot of information and I trust the administration and I trust their decisions. I don't always agree with them, but I trust them and I thank you. And I think we're working incredibly hard, you guys are working incredibly hard for our children and we have to be adaptable and we will be adaptable and we listen to input and we will make changes when necessary.
Yes. Um, Mr. Brown.
Thank you. Um, following up on a couple of comments made by our chair. Um, in terms of communications, you gave us the courtesy of giving the heads up on the K through two a couple of hours before it went out this Friday. When we had the board meeting, I think it was August 10th, um, about the communication of having the three week hybrid. Did you communicate via email to the board or with any particular member of the board that you, the decision that would be coming out?
Mr. Brown, I'd have to go back and look at my communications as regard, I would have to go back and look at my communications regarding that, that.
But you didn't ask us, we didn't vote on it or anything, that was your decision, correct?
Well, there was, there was no vote that was taken by the board, but you had, there were, I certainly wrote to the board and asked them for any questions that you had pertaining to it that I could explain at one of the, the board meetings, uh, that certainly took place.
And then I guess.
Can I just make a, have a point of order, I'm sorry. Yeah, um, anytime you want to vote on something, Dave, bring it up for a vote, you can make a motion anytime. So if you want to vote on the hybrid, vote on, bring it up, we'll make a motion, we'll vote on it. Any member of this board table can vote on any issue they want anytime.
And if there was an implication that a member of the board had information prior to hybrid, that we are going hybrid, the board chair certainly didn't. The board chair communicates with superintendent directly. So if any board member wants to say that they knew beforehand, they can feel free to know that. But as a board chair, I did not, however, the power in that decision was vested in the superintendent at that time.
Thank you. There's been a number of questions from constituents, so I'm glad we were able to get that out there on the record. Thank you. Uh, another question is Tara, uh, I don't know the correct source, maybe this is for council, but the state view, uh, the department of education had provided guidance. I, I can't find the citation. Is that something we could ask our attorney where, where that guidance was or where that came in with the board, uh, that the selectmen would be making the decision? Or maybe I just am looking the wrong way.
The selectman?
Excuse me, superintendent, sorry.
Um, we, we can email Commissioner Cardona if you'd like.
Sure, thank you. Um, and then one other thing.
His email is on the website, state department of education.
I just, you mentioned there've been a number of communications coming from CAE, but I didn't think that would be a difficult task, my mistake.
I, wait, whoa, whoa, Dave, why are we getting hostile? I didn't say it was difficult. I said, when I was on my communications with board chairs, I pushed quite hard because I saw that it was a right and a responsibility of boards of educations to close and reopen schools. If those conversations are recorded, I'm more than happy to share them with you. Also, I do believe Commissioner Cardona, and I believe it was shared with all board members, I'll go back to my communications, said that this would be a power invested with superintendent, so it should be in your email. But the hostility, I think we can take down a level.
So the next question I had, Dr. Adley, is you had mentioned, um, football earlier.
My point of order, are we leaving, are we moving on to football now, the other topic?
No, we're not actually, we're going to the fact that you had mentioned CIC has closed it. But I believe you mentioned something to the effect of if the board wanted to take another action towards football, we might be able to be involved. I'm trying to understand, thank you for letting me introduce it. What's the difference between the policy for reopening schools or this potential board action we could have maybe to do something and override CIC or override a sports decision? I'm just trying to understand where the sources.
In general, in general terms, Mr. Brown, uh, C I C does do the guidelines. But anywhere and, and any of the issues, uh, either historically or this year, a board can override that. That, that's the C I C, uh, you, you may be implications to that, uh, but a board could conceivably override one of those decisions.
Yes, there's a difference between CIC, which is a governing board of sports and the state department of education for whom we derive our agency and our authority as a board. So CIC has issued guidelines.
That's what I was trying to distinguish was the two different, so thank you.
Are there any other? Sure.
I just want to reiterate my, my point. I think it kind of got derailed that it was a constructive point, that this board can work better together with the administration that has done yeoman's work to get the district back in school. Um, and it was not meant to be taken, hopefully was not taken as a negative comment, but one that we can improve on and help represent our community and represent our administration within our community. So I.
I think your comments were taken as such.
Oh, wow.
I think, I think it devolved elsewhere, but yes.
Well, I just wanted to make sure based on where it devolved to.
Yes, thank you. Mrs. Ritchie.
K two, Oxbridge and football, or can I speak to something else at this point?
I think, does anyone else, just so we stay organized, have any other questions on the K two rollout of curriculum? Mrs. McCannan.
Yeah, I just, I, I spoke to it a little bit, but I, I just want to reiterate the point. It, you may not have an answer. Um, but I think it's fairly critical for that cohort not to feel like their kids are being left behind. I think that's a significant concern. So to the extent that we can communicate what the plan is going forward for how these kids are going to be educated. I do appreciate it's a pandemic and learning is, is, is different in this environment. And we're, you know, there are things, areas where we have to be flexible. At the same time, we, we do need to keep learning, moving forward. So I think just making sure that that line of communication is open and that that's clear to parents is fairly critical.
I think it, and I think it's fair to say that nobody sitting up here is particularly satisfied that this is the position we're in with K through two and what we're hoping is that we progress forward. We understand it's an alternate plan, given the situation we are in, but we certainly don't expect this to be a stasis point. We expect this to be a, a launching pad so that our K through two children, um, can thrive in this environment as much as all of our other children. Any other K through two, and then we can move on.
Well, I want to make sure, we were talking about Ox, I mean, I want to make sure that the topics.
We did Ox.
Do you want to talk about football anymore? I just, I don't want to move on to something else until, oh, Dennis.
Mr. Maroney.
Just a point on K, K two, and I, and I would like to echo something you said, Tara. I think, you know, that for me, the community needs to work, to John's point is, you know, we need to work with the administration, but the community needs to work with us as well, right? So it's been three days of schooling and yes, maybe it's not perfect the way it is. And your, your, the citizens are complaining about what's happening. Tramburg has come in and said, we're going to change. You have to give us some time to affect that change and see how it works and give feedback and run through that process. And yes, I understand it's your children and it's their, 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 their learning or lack of learning, whichever way you want to look at it. But you need to have some time to let it work through the system, to work out the problems or to find the better solutions. Because it take, it's going to take some effort and some community to find an answer.
Well said. Mr. Maroney. Um, Mrs. Ritchie.
Well, you, you know, I talk about this every time we have a meeting, communication and I just, it's good and it can always get better. And I'm hearing from parents that they're not getting responses. Sometimes they're not hearing back from emails at all. And I, I think we need to do better. And I know there's, you're probably being inundated, everybody is right now. Um, I have, I'm hearing concerns from parents of students who are in their classrooms. The middle school, we see it a lot where they're in their classroom, teachers are rotating in, the students are staying in their classroom. And some students are even staying in there for lunch and having to remove masks. And I'm just, I'm hearing from parents that they're just very concerned. And are there alternatives that we're exploring to potentially get kids outside? More time to move around the building? And I know we, obviously we've got to be safe when we do all that, but the kids, I, I just have concerns about kids being in one room the entire school day. It's not good for anyone to be stuck in a room for the entire day. So I hope we're, we're having some thoughts on that as we move along, if there's a way that we can adapt that and just look out for those kids and make sure that they're healthy and that when those masks come, come off, they're safe distance and there's not a, a potential risk of infection.
Yeah, I, I appreciate those suggestions, comments, observations. Um, and certainly the, the major area was really is lunchtime, but, but certainly if kids can get out of the classroom, that's helpful.
Certainly I think lunch, if we can keep examining lunch and how we do that. Mr. Deneen.
I think just to follow up that from a communication standpoint, I think the word you have to add in there is consistency. And the feedback that I got and it was.
Dave, can you speak in, sorry?
Sorry, is can, on top of the communication to Deb's point, it's consistency. And I think out of all the feedback that I got over the weekend, which was mostly positive and, you know, some of the feedback out of the high school was there was a nervousness that translated then into an energy as people started to see people and, and get a feel for how they were going to move around the school and that, all that good type of stuff. And everyone was happy to be back. I will say the feedback from a middle school standpoint was just inconsistencies in the messaging that was delivered to the point of you can drink water in a classroom, you can't drink water in a classroom. You have to put your mask on after you take a bite of your sandwich and you can't leave your mask off. Um, and to some of the other points about moving around the school. I will also say that some of the feedback I got was in some of the comments that the teachers and the professionals were saying to the students around not, around themselves being nervous and not necessarily one comment was wanting to be there. So I think we have to be very cautious about comments that are made to our students. And they need to be supportive, they need to be filled with empathy. And I totally understand what the teachers are going through and we couldn't do it without them. But I think there has to be some check in terms of the overall communication that's coming out of the teachers.
Okay, any other board questions? Mr. Maroney.
Yeah, I would like to, to echo that. I mean, I think we, I think there's a, you know, not, maybe not the first day or so of school, but I think school can become a drudgery and I gotta go to school again. But I think there's a fine line between that feeling and I'm in a prison and I'm, I'm forced to sit at my desk. I'm not allowed to take a mask off, I'm not allowed to eat. And, and I think there's, there were some comments I've heard where the students are feeling like a prisoner. And it becomes a dangerous comment to me. And, and I think we really need to make sure we work on our SEL and make sure that there's, there's interaction as much as we can in, in this pandemic environment.
I certainly would not like, uh, that comment, I just certainly would not like our, our students to feel like they're in a prison. That, that's, um, that's an, that's a somewhat disturbing statement, but that, but I can understand where, I can understand how it may be expressed, but understood.
So maybe the best is then if we build upon the excitement and, and we, we find a way to build upon the excitement that so many people have that first couple of days. Um, lastly on reopening, I would just like to say, I know we had a lot of football comments. Um, I understand the frustration, CIC has been all over the board. Um, I think in an awful situation where I don't have a great answer, what was most impressive is we had some students go up to West Hartford and advocate for what they believe in. I think that's what we're teaching our kids, to find their voice, to stand up for what they believe in and to do it in a respectful, reasonable way. Throughout this pandemic, we, we've seen people speak up for what they believe in. So, um, while this is complicated and I know there's a lot of emotions around it. Um, I do think that, that, that those children should be, um, and really those young adults should be commended for believing in something, having a lot of heart and, and hoping to be heard. So we will continue to follow this. It's, it's complicated, it's not so easy. I mean, our boys can't play against each other. Um, and if they could, they, they could do that already because we have them practicing. So, um, it's complicated, but I, I do think that, that respectfully voicing your opinion and learning to participate in society is what we say our mission is. So, so good for them for, for doing exactly that.
There's a bigger group going up to Hartford tomorrow, actually.
Okay, so I mean, I think that's what we're asking, we're saying we're raising citizens to participate in society and they're finding their voice and their way to participate about something they care about and they're doing it respectfully. And I think as a board, um, we, we need to be proud of that. And certainly all the teachers and administrators and, and their parents who have taught them how to do that and do that well. Um, with that, I will move on if there are no other questions. Oh, Mrs. McCannan.
I actually wanted, on a positive note, to, in the spirit of reopening, say thank you to the tech team. My, my impression is this meeting tonight is, is going a lot better. And then I'm imagining a lot of work went into making it so that people can hear and see. And so I just wanted to take a minute to say thank you.
I also thank the parents who actually did a trial run for us on Friday.
Yes, that's a trial run. Um, Mr. Burke.
I, you, just before we leave the football area, because there was a lot of comment. And I will say in transparency, I have two seniors, so this would be or would not be their last season of football. But I, I think my colleagues know I make these comments in, in good faith and for all students as opposed to the interest of my own, uh, children, but I wanted to get that out there. But as I understand it currently, the CIC has taken the decision about a season out of the hands of local superintendents of boards and boards of educations. Because if I understand their communication correctly, the CIC isn't running a season. So until such time, either they decide to run one and, and then that would maybe put us in a position where we would have to make a decision of going forward or fielding a team. I mean, right now, the CIC is not running a season. So there is really nothing for us to, to say or do about that. And I think it's important that parents know what our, our role is at, at this point.
Mr. Maroney.
I think that, that to me begs the question. I think, you know, in, in looking at this, I, I think we, we in Connecticut now are mirroring the NCAA. So you look at the Big Ten and the PAC, the PAC twelve, and they both have not moved forward with football. The SEC, the Big Twelve and the ACC have. The Big Ten said, you know, myocarditis is a huge, a huge problem with sports and they're not going to subject their student athletes to that. I read something last week that said, a Penn State doctor said that of the Big Ten athletes who have had COVID, 35% of them have had myocarditis. That's an astounding number and a very scary number, I think. Having said that, I think the question I have to Mr. Burke's comment is that we, we participate in sports which are not sanctioned by the C I A C. So why could we not schedule football, which is no longer, which would not be sanctioned by the C I A C? You know, girls' ice hockey is not a C I A C sport. Could we not just say either we're not going to belong to the C I A C in the future or just for 2020, we are not going to belong to, to the C I A C and play and join and ask other schools to join us if that's what are we intent? Now again, I think that there's, there's, you could do, may possibly do something like that. But there's also negatives to this where, you know, kids could have some underlying health conditions which could affect you for the rest of your life and is it worth it, so?
So I would just say to that, I would respectfully not go against the recommendation of aesthetic, Connecticut, Connecticut State Department of Public Health or our medical advisor or our COVID compliance officer. I have not spoken to today the, the district health, um, director, but I have spoken to the, to the others. Um, that's, I, I just can't recommend the board going against that directive.
Well, I mean, I just, can I just, I mean, I would imagine if you play a sport outside of the CIC, is there potential liability issues or legal issues that go along with that? So I mean, I, you could go down the rabbit hole with it, but I don't know if, if we just like hypothetically decide to do that.
I think, I think, I think the broader question for the board is that at the moment, the guiding theory has been CIC and the state department of health are making a decision around sports. Should any individual board decide to change that that's the authority making it? I do. I do think we are becoming part medical professional, part sports professional, part educating professional. And so I think we, we would have to discuss what our role is and what we feel comfortable. I do think that there's a lot of voices and a lot of organization going to the CIAC. At the moment, our guiding theory has been State Department of Health and CAC. If there becomes a point at which we are looking somewhere else for some other reason, I think we'd have to know why and who and what the factors are. So I think that's where we are right now. Mr. Seedy.
I just, I want to clarify something. I've heard up until this moment, it's been the CAC that we're relying on the guidance and relying on their best judgment from the Department of Health.
Yes, I'm sorry, that is a correct statement.
Because we may be faced with an issue, and I'm hypothesizing
Yeah.
that you have a break in that. Who knows? But maybe we should not.
At the moment, CAC has been our governing body to make this decision.
Okay, I just want to make that clear.
Yes.
And so let's not, let's wait and see what happens, I guess, is what I would say.
Yeah, CAC has been very clear that they've been waiting for information from the State Department of Health for which there is frustration and cooperation there. But yes, we, we have been, we have said CAC will make our decisions around sports, which is why volleyball is outside, because that was their decision, which is why football at the moment is seven on seven, because they are the ones issuing the guidelines. So, Mr. Burke.
Right. And I intentionally in my comments, I didn't offer a thought whether or not it was safe or unsafe. I think the, the point is, is right now, it's not our decision. But if it were, I think that there's a boatload of information to consider across different states, across different populations. And yes, the NCAA, some leagues are not doing it, but there are states all across the country that are running football programs. So if it were to come to our desk, I think that we would have to really take an exhaustive view and collect a lot of information and data in order to make an intelligent choice. And right now, it's not our piece of work and the CAC has made that decision.
Okay. So we are going to move on to a presentation discussion of the Board Master Agenda for August 2020 through January 21. Dr. Adley.
So this, this has been revised. As you see in front of you, I'm certainly open for suggestions or revisions or otherwise, but this is our general practice. It's a, it's a working draft, so you can certainly take it at your leisure and.
Are we putting it up?
Oh.
Fine, we have it here. Any comments on the Board Master Agenda? Mrs. Ritchie.
Just on October 13th, it says follow-up report on Darien High School class of 2019. Did you mean 2020? Or are we talking about 2019?
Sorry, where are you, November 13th?
It's October 13th, the last bullet point, the fourth bullet point.
Yes, that would be.
Is it 2020?
Yeah.
The follow-up, yeah.
We're still waiting.
Thank you.
Didn't get a full report, so, okay.
We, we hope the class of 2019 is doing great.
Well, I wasn't thinking we were getting a follow-up on that.
Any other discussion? Mr. Seedy.
I just, I know we got diverted with opening schools up, but I'm pretty much focused on getting the self-assessment done. When would we do that?
So I reached out to K. They don't have all board members form filled out.
Right.
So is, they need five days to do that. I will put it on an agenda as soon as all board members have turned in their form and turned it around.
I'm guilty of not doing it because I got diverted for a number of things, so.
We've had a lot going on.
Yeah.
But I checked.
Is there a target date, I guess?
Yes, I checked in, my target date would be as soon as possible. So as soon as it gets in, we'll turn it around and get it on an agenda.
Okay.
I only have been informed of two that I've gone in. So with all due haste, and it will show up on an agenda. Before November would be great, so.
Tara.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Tara, can you hear me?
Oh, Katie, do you have your hand up? Mrs. Stein.
Yeah, sorry, my internet has been bad all day. I've gotten booted off everything, so I missed a lot. But for this, Dr. Adley, we talked today at Strategic Planning about maybe having an update on the 22nd. Do we want to add that or just have a placeholder?
Katie, could you just repeat what you wanted on the 22nd of which month?
Strategic planning.
Strategic.
Oh, yes, yes, we could, yes, we could, yes, we can certainly do that, yes.
Can we, could we pace out for the master agenda, any strategic planning updates? And then when board action would be needed on the next version of this? So the 22nd, and then if there's another update expected, just so, because I think that's a piece we really need to incorporate.
Yeah, I think, I think from the 22nd onwards, it's going to reside here at the board level, but it might take a, a meeting or two or three just to wrap it up.
Yeah, I think it will probably, at a minimum, take two, probably three. So if we could pace it out on the master agenda, just so everyone knows when to expect it, that would be great. Thank you, Mrs. Stein, and thank you, whoever caught her down there. Any other questions on the master agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to action items. Mrs. Saya.
So this PAR represents the, almost the end of the puzzle of staffing for this year with COVID. We have three positions that remain unopen. We're covering them for now and, and we're doing the best we can to find those people.
Great. May I have a motion to approve the PA dated September 8th, 2020? Mr. Burke, so moves. Mr. Maroney, seconds. All in favor? That is unanimous. And is there any public comment to end this evening? Let's just give Michelle one moment to get situated. And thank you. I know it's been a bit of a, public comment's been a bit of a jumble, but we do appreciate having live public comment and with the public being able to hear all the comments.
Carolina Magoue, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, thank you so much. Carolina Magoue, 28, Kentet Lane. I have two children in the Darien Public Schools and I want to thank the administration and the Board of Ed for the unfathomable amount of work that you all have put in, as well as for the flexibility to adjust to the fluidity of the situation we are living with. We all want life to go back to normal, what we are living during a pandemic. And yes, we are lucky that Connecticut numbers are now low and things seem to be under control. I commend the measure of starting as hybrid in order to try to control the possibility of an outbreak by limiting the number of kids, teachers, administrators, and other school employees at one time in school facilities, as well as in order to make sure our teachers felt safe and prepare for the possibility that we might need to go to remote at some point during the school year. I understand how hard it is to please everyone and that sadly, no decision or implementation made will make everyone happy. I do feel bad for everyone right now. All our lives have been altered and we feel like we don't have control of many things. Therefore, we are mad, scared, and frustrated at the current situation. And we lash out at the people that don't agree with what we feel is right, correct, or should be done. I'm also sympathetic to the Darien football family and the frustration they feel by the CAC and the Public Health decision regarding fall football. But there are children that go to Darien Public Schools for whom musical teacher is their motivator to go to school, band is their motivator to go to school, tutor singers is their motivation to go to school, orchestra is their motivation to go to school, and they have worked equally hard to excel at those activities. So we all need to try to be not as myopic, but understand that we are all making sacrifices for the greater good of our community. Being part of one does not give us carte blanche to do as we please. We all have responsibilities. I don't doubt for one second that Dr. Adley and the rest of the administration and the Board of Ed has acted with the best interest of all our children in mind. We are indeed living extraordinary times. Let's trust the experts and our health officials and be patient, patient. Once again, thank you all.
Thank you, Mrs. Magoue. Our next speaker?
Lublin, you are unmuted and recognized.
Katie Lublin, 24, Maplewood Drive, CDSP Special Education Chair. In response to the ESY presentation, we'd like to request that the results of the parent survey be shared publicly once they are in. And finding the delay of the survey being sent out unfortunate. Could this information have helped inform fall plans and schedules for students? Do you also plan to survey ESY staff? We would also ask how many students began but ultimately dropped out of ESY. How many of those left the program due to ESY being conducted only online? What were the financial implications of ESY students being unable to engage in a digital platform? What are the implications for special education students who are only able to be in school in person two days a week in the current hybrid model? What might we face in an unfortunate return to a fully remote environment? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lublin. Our next speaker, please.
Greg Gramblin, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi there. I'm not going to speak a whole lot more since I made comments earlier. I wanted to comment on all the tickets that, that were mentioned. There's a thousand tickets in one day, which seems like just on simple math equates to roughly 50% of the students at home are failing to appropriately log in or do other things with the technology, since half of the 4,500 students are in school. There seems to be a pretty simple, cost-efficient solution that resolves the tech issues for the kids, the need for expensive laptops that don't work, the need for logins and tech teams working weekends, and that's five days a week in person. 55% of the public schools in our state have figured this out. I think it's time for the board and the administration to do so as well. The amount of time, money, and resources being spent on figuring out how to cater to the hybrid model, which is supposed to end in 21 days, makes absolutely no sense whatsoever.
Mr. Gramblin, can you please state your address for the record?
11 Blueberry Lane.
Thank you, Mr. Gramblin. Our next speaker.
Jocelyn Delancy, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, thank you. Jocelyn Delancy, 110 Commons Park North, Stanford, Connecticut, speaking on behalf of the Darien teachers. As I listen to the comments tonight and also some questions, I want to restate my request earlier for patience and flexibility. The teacher's priority has always been two things, safety and quality of instruction. We still feel like we'd like, like more of a voice on how we reflect and move forward with curriculum and safety protocols. I would like to share with you a couple of things that teachers have been through for the past couple of weeks, so you understand our commitment to you and our fear for our safety. There are teachers who have had to send their children to parents, their own parents, so that they could work in schools and not bring back any threat of COVID to their child who may or may not have some underlying health conditions. There are teachers who have had to say temporary goodbyes to parents in facilities and healthcare places because they do not want to get their parents sick. Your teachers have made sacrifices and have compromised and tried to find balance in order to provide for your kids. We have to put safety and health first. That's why we're in this position. That's why we're making these choices. If there's anything that I have ever wanted to be proven wrong on, and I don't usually like to be proven wrong, would be my fear of COVID-19. As we move forward, I am imploring you to please remember to be kind, respectful, mindful of everyone's sacrifices and to take safety first. I'm hearing a lot of things that I understand, we want the social emotional needs of our kids to be taken seriously, we want to support them, but we need them healthy and safe all the time. Your teachers are fully committed to your children and families, and we want to make sure that as we move forward, you share that commitment to them and thank them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Delancy. Our next speaker.
Jamie Zionik, you are unmuted and recognized.
Mrs. Zionik?
Still muted.
She's still muted.
Can you hear me now?
We can, thank you.
Hi, I'm Jamie Zionik. I'm at 15 Holmes Court. As Dr. Adley knows, I've been in meetings with him since 4:00 PM, so I don't have the planned statements that some others did tonight, but, and I'll be very quick. But I just wanted to make a note that the State Department mandate has been for special education services to return on day one of the school year. And from the feedback I'm getting from parents, I don't believe that's happened. So I'd like to know when special education services will be returned to our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Zionik. Our next speaker.
We have no more speakers.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Maroney?
Thank you.
Mr. Dineen, all in, oh, I'm sorry.
We have a last minute raised hand.
So we made a motion on the table, unless someone wants to amend the motion? Okay, Mr. Maroney, amendments, can I have a second? Mr. Burke, all in favor? Okay. Our last speaker, you got in under the wire.
Krista Struck, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, thank you. I know everyone wants to go home. Just a quick question. First off, the, if anybody's interested in myocarditis statistics, you can go to the National Center for Biotechnology Information or to JAMA. It's about 0.94 in 100,000 people. Outside of that, just for the football folks, outside of that, I was wondering if you guys could give me the dimensions of the portables? Because I've been working on a metric all night, trying to figure out how we're going to fit 25, if you give them even two feet from each wall. It doesn't seem like once we've got all 25 back there, even if that's the bottom metric, with a teacher and a para, and be able to give them six feet each. So if we don't have those metrics tonight, if maybe we could all try to chat tomorrow and figure out how they're all going to fit in there with six feet apart at lunch? Because I can't, I've done it eight different ways and I can't figure it out.
Thank you, Mrs. Struck. And with that, are there any other speakers?
No.
Okay. Can I entertain a motion to adjourn? Mr. Maroney, so moves. And a second, Mr. Burke, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.